All right, I will turn my video on.
Really?
So it is my pleasure to call to order remotely the, the what is it today, October 2nd, meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. I am joining remotely tonight, and we do have another member, Bonnie Miles. I guess it's also remote. Otherwise, we're expecting a full board. Hopefully Mitch will make it. And as usual, we'll start with the information exchange. Cecilia, you want to start us off? Oh, no, sorry. Are we doing, I don't even have the agenda in front of me. Are we doing the, the, the?
North Star.
The head of the information exchange?
No, no, we're, we're, we're still waiting for North Star, so.
Okay.
We are.
So we'll do the information exchange first?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry. Thought I saw that. Don't have it pinned.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it is my pleasure to introduce our new town planner, Kyle Drexler, who is joining us, and he is going to introduce himself to all of you.
Hi, everyone. Met some of you, but just a quick introduction again. Kyle Drexler just started, I don't know, three or four weeks ago now here in the town as town planner. Before working here, I was doing planning in South Portland and Orano before that. So happy to be here and happy to start working with you all more and with the project review board. Cecilia and Caroline have been a huge help, helping me to kind of acclimate to the position. So yeah, sure, we'll talk more, but just happy to be here. Thanks.
And Kyle has been amazing because he was just kind of thrown into everything and with not much transition to warm up, so it's been really great. Okay. Sam, I can do the report of items reviewed by the project review board?
Yes, that would be great. Sorry, I'm just starting from my mute button here.
Sure.
So yeah, if you want to just run through the, the information exchange items, that would, that would be totally fine.
Great. So the project review board had quite a few more of those shoreline zoning permit applications. So in September, there were just two of them, one for 10 Riverview Road and other one for 8 Riverview Road, and both were approved. And then since we haven't met for two months, well, there's been two months of project review board activity. There's also some updates from the August 21st. There was the Varney Heights subdivision review and site plan review that is for, that was for the preliminary subdivision, subdivision plans for an affordable housing development. At, and that one is on the commercial 3 and part of residential 1 on Lower Main Street and Varney Road. That one, that preliminary plan was approved, and they should be back in November for the final subdivision plans. This is for multifamily affordable housing development. And then we had another shoreline application, stabilization application, and that was at 44 Brickyard Cove, which was approved. And then Denny Block came in for design review certificate and site plan amendment for the property at 66 Main Street, and that was just a conceptual plan, so there was no decision made. That does it for our updates from the Freeport Project Review Board.
Those shoreline zoning applications are for storm damage?
I believe that most of them are after that big storm. So many applicants had to come back to do a lot of remediation from, yeah. I think, there you go. Okay. So that was for the information exchange. And then Sam, I think we had some item number.
Yeah, so item number two, I think, is the update, is it not, from the comprehensive plan?
Oh, no, that's the review of the minutes.
Oh, that's item number three, sorry.
That's okay.
That's, yep. Item, item number two is the review of the meeting minutes from the August 7th Planning Board meeting. Does anybody have any comments or questions or anything on these, on these notes?
They're amazing.
As usual.
Amazing, amazing.
Just like living the meeting all over again.
Right.
It looks like we are going to be joined by Mitch, if you want to wait to vote on the approval of the minutes.
Sure.
Thank you, Sam.
We'll give Mitch a moment.
Okay, Sam, I'm here.
So, and this was one of the recent meetings where we had a full board. So once again, we have a full board, and as a reminder, we will do a roll call since we're kind of a hybrid meeting tonight. So I will turn my video on. I think Bonnie, if you're able to turn your video on, I believe that is important for procedural rules for, for votes. Do I hear a motion to approve the August 7th minutes written?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, I heard Wayne Rosemary there for the motion in the second. Call in favor, we'll do roll call. I don't think I go by the words IC here, so hopefully that'll not be too confusing. Rosemary?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So that approves the minutes from the August 7th meeting. And as always, thank you very much to Sharon for taking excellent notes.
Excellent.
Is North Star on site yet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Sorry, I can't see that part of the room.
Yes, that, yes, so Charles just arrived.
If North Star's there, then we will welcome them to, to lead us through item number three, which is an update on the comprehensive plan process. As, as North Star is getting set up here, I would like to take a moment to thank members of the board and also the public, anyone who's, who's watching this, maybe also was likely at the, at the workshop at Me Has Arts the other night. I thought it was great to see so many concerned folks come out, and you know, I think we'll learn a little bit more about, about the North Star process and what they got out of the meeting and kind of the next steps. And I hope, I hope we get the same or even better turnout at the next couple. We do have a couple more, so thanks to all who came and bring your friends.
Thank you. Good evening. Sam, can you hear me okay?
Try again.
Sam, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I got you.
Cool, perfect.
Yep, loud and clear.
All right, sweet. So hey, everyone, again, thanks for coming out last Monday to the housing workshop. I think I saw most of you, if not all of you. Looking forward to seeing you next Monday for the environment workshop or environmental workshop at the Freeport High School at 6:00 PM. I'll go back through that later, so I just want to start out there. So tonight, I know we have a little bit less time than we usually have, so instead of spending two hours, we're going to try to get through this in 60 minutes. I, I do want to talk about the housing workshop, give you a little preview on the environmental workshop, talk, answer any questions about the data sharing analysis that was, analysis that was sent around, and then finally jump into some visioning. I think we've been waiting to really talk about visioning policies, goals. We've been trying to hold you, hold you back as we go through the inventory chapters, but now we're moving into that, that fun planning stage, the visioning policies, goals, and it all kind of leads together. So I do want to give a little overview of the visioning survey and workshop overview. We had sent this out between April and July. We had 445 online and physical surveys, surveys filled out, and we had around 61 attendees for the vision workshop in June. And this is going to be part of the appendix to the plan as kind of letting the state know. As part of the larger public participation plan, this is one of four workshops that we're hosting. We're now moving into the third. But an important piece of this was that initial general visioning question. So if you're looking at that document we sent along, it has some of those graphs with a little bit more explanation and detail to it. Any questions on that document?
We're talking about the Freeport Data Sharing and Vision Survey now.
Well, I've been impressed, this is the first I've seen it, so I can't give you any feedback.
I didn't understand one, one item. How old are you? It didn't make sense, the gray part of it.
What page is that on? Sorry.
It's on page 18.
The gray part is just 25 to 34, so that's just one of the color with the little line that.
No, the larger gray, 55 to 4. I just don't understand that.
That should be 55 to 65, so.
Thank you.
Great catch, thank you. So that's, yeah, 22 of the population is 55. No, it's noted.
I didn't, just wanted to get that.
I'll make a note to myself to do that.
55 to 64.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, I'm missing a six there.
Yeah, okay.
Charles, are you taking feedback on this? It's Caroline. Are you taking feedback on this document from the board at some point in this process?
Probably as we move into final, final plan drafting. Right now, there's really, this is just kind of a high-level analysis. I do, we'll, we'll circle back to this later a little bit, but this is just kind of that, a review of that stage in the public participation process.
I'll repeat something that we said right at the very outset of this, which is a chart like this is relatively meaningless without comparing it to the nation, the communities. I mean, I don't know how to, is that good?
And what?
What does it mean?
Which one specifically?
I'm looking at that age chart we're just looking at. I mean, in many of these things, without a reference to what was it, what should it be, what other people do, they're just loose data that's.
But this is not an exercise that we're comparing data to, where I, to see your point, in a lot of the inventory chapters where we're diving into that data, we do pull that regional data. But this is simply just the demographics of the people who took the survey. So when you think about the answers.
Oh, this is just the demographics of the survey. I'm sorry.
Yes, this is not.
Demographics and results. So sorry.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's hard to, these aren't like the demographics we're using in the population chapter.
I gotcha.
But what we try to do with these demographics is combine this with the answers and like kind of see as part, because we did this early in June, we were able to see, as we mentioned, that we're not getting a younger population. We know that Freeport is, I think the average age is like 47.4 or something on the higher end of like the state average. But what we're seeing is we're still not getting a lot of feedback.
From that.
From a younger, from that 25 to 45 range. So new parents, one of the demo, one of the demographics that we, that we didn't get a lot of are people with children, which we know there are a lot of, you know, families in Freeport or.
Charles, I have a quick question. When you say that the average age, does that, is that like homeowners or just permanent residents, year-round residents?
Uh, that's from census data.
Okay, so that would be just like year-round residents, right?
Yeah.
Because each family only gets one census mailer, right? They don't just send one to every house and they add this? Is that how that works?
And that's still, it's also, again, that's part of that data estimate where like if the average age they have between 44 and 47, it's probably plus or minus one or two, especially with age, because you have some people who don't take it, some people who, it's hard to capture renters in that, in census data. So there's always that data, but having that in the upper 40s is still an indicator that Freeport is older, because it's still, the range is around that number.
Right, yeah, I was, I was curious if it would be skewed even more by including a lot of seasonal owners who tend to lean older, but it sounds like it doesn't, so thanks.
Yeah, but the, the purpose of this is to kind of say, especially as we talk about visioning tonight, what are the people who are engaged in the comprehensive plan saying? What, when we prompt them with these general visioning questions? A good example is like on page seven, we suggest, we ask, what's the best thing about living in Freeport? And a really great thing about this is we asked this on the survey, but we also had, and that map on page seven is also at the end of the document as well. But that's from the workshop, so we were able to ask the survey, what's your best thing about living in Freeport? And then when we brought it to the workshop, you have a similar, similar answers, but you're seeing what the people responding to the survey are saying. So the people who are tuned in to the comprehensive plan process, but also the people we've done our outreach to, this is their response. So as we go into those visioning conversations tonight, you know that a lot of people say the best three things about living in Freeport are community, the open space, and the downtown. So we can kind of use this visioning data, this survey data, as well as some of the inventory and of course the workshop feedback to really frame our conversation about visioning, and that leads into the goals, policies, implementation. Yeah, we'll definitely.
What are our goals tonight?
What was that?
What are our goals right now, tonight?
For, just for this, it's just to, you know, I'm presenting you the draft of this vision analysis. Ideally, you can look at this, if there's anything striking to you, where you're like, oh, I didn't know that people avoid visiting Route 1 Desert Road or the Downtown Village. Or any of these questions that you.
So are we going to have a meeting when we should give you that? Has everybody had this before now?
I believe we sent it in September as part of our August update. Is that correct, Caroline?
So go for it. I recuse, I recuse myself.
But it's fine. We'll be, and I think it's important, just as we go into visioning, as we go into these policy goals, we look at what the public are saying. And this, this is not the only time, so obviously we have the housing, the housing workshop, we're having the environmental workshop, and then in November, we have a future land use workshop. And these are all, the real, the goal of those is public outreach, getting people's feelings on certain scenarios, what are people thinking about in terms of housing? And for the visioning, just when we prompt people with pretty general questions about Freeport, what are they saying? What does this mean? So I was just curious if, I didn't want to spend too much time on this tonight, but just to see if there's any immediate thoughts of the board.
I got a couple.
Yeah.
I'm reading through this, and it talks about, you know, what if the population changes next 10 years? I think it's minimal to no growth, stay the same. Then you read through it, and we want more density, and we want more people to live downtown, but we don't want to have any, we want minimal growth, so.
Well, it's the difference between the workshop comments and some of the survey comments.
Yeah.
Actually, you know, at least where I'm seeing this, you've got, you know, no growth or growth. It's really pretty much, you know, it's two different opinions.
Yeah, so.
Which, you know, pretty much everything I've heard since I've been involved in the town is growth, you know, so there's one, one bit of evidence now against, you know, trying, trying to not, no growth, minimal growth.
I do think that's a nice segue, kind of, and we can keep talking about the vision workshop, but I also did want to go into that housing, a quick immediate response to the housing workshop. What are the takeaways? We tried a new format, I think based off of feedback from staff and based off of our other previous work. We opted for more of a Q and A with a panel and obviously our presentation by Jeff Levine. So curious of the board's feedback on that, if there were any, you know, takeaways that you got from the public, from the panel, if you have any additional questions, kind of just what are your thoughts on the housing workshop that we hosted?
I didn't go.
Good feedback. You should go to the one on Monday.
Honestly, two people called me up, and I says, we have workshop after workshop after workshop to discuss housing, and what we really need to do is just build some housing instead of having another workshop or another seminar or another visioning thing, you know. We had one with the downtown Freeport thing, where we had, you know, Russ from Principal Group come up and talk about housing downtown, and we've had all kinds of, you know, housing proposals, and seems so since I've been living in Freeport all my life, and all the houses got torn down, we never built a new one in downtown, so. Sorry, I just, I just got bored with it, and that's all.
I think part of the problem is these were residents of Freeport who already have houses, and they're less concerned than other people who can't afford houses and would like to live here. So I think the, you know, those of us on boards and committees and town council, I think have to think about what's best for the town as a whole, including people who would like to live here in the future. So I think there's natural bias among people to talk about low growth as opposed to more growth.
I'm very sensitive to what you just said, but I, I'm also aware that we are beholden to our, the residents are the bosses here. The current residents are really the bosses here. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing, I'll just give my feedback that I thought Jeff Levine went on about 4X too long. I was shocked. I thought we didn't need a lecture or a seminar about housing, we needed to get community feedback. And I thought the format was not set up to elicit community feedback. The only part that I thought was of value was when the audience talked, and that was about 10 minutes out of 90.
Yeah, I would agree with Mitch that. I, I think we were just hitting our stride when we had called, called it a meeting, right? Eight o'clock, people just.
That was the only part that was good.
People were getting into it, and that should have, you know, been, been a focus or, or we could have just kept on going with that, and not made a hard break at eight or, or something, structured that a little bit differently. I agree, you know, want to hear from the people, want to engage the people, you know, all kinds of opinions come out, you know, with the public and things like, in those, in those scenarios, but that's, that's, that's what we need to hear.
That's what we need to hear is both for and against, and first of all, he had a, a clear bias, and I think the bias is not, I think it's a bias most people on this board share and most people in the community share. So I don't think it was a strange bias, but it was not a, let's hear what the public has to say, and let's pull out both sides and so that, because if we're going to, if we're going to encourage dense housing downtown, which I think is sort of the consensus of the town and us, we better start, what do you call it, you know, putting that out there and listening to the objections and seeing if we can ameliorate them or talk them down or isolate them and say you're a minority or something, but we can't ignore having that conversation. I don't think we got there.
Yeah, I think that was one of my big takeaways, was that we didn't set the stage enough, not even with Jeff, just for our, where we're at, what we've learned so far in the, you know, inventory analysis, what we know about from the Downtown Village Plan, is that I, I think we all who deal with this day to day, who have been involved with this comprehensive plan process since February, have really, you know, gone forward with like, there's going to be growth, there's going to be some sort of economic development changes. We don't really know what form or that's going to take yet, but we've been moving forward with that. We had the population chapter saying the population's going to be, keep increasing. You can't really cap population, you can't say, no, we're not going to do that.
You can if you don't build. If you don't build any more housing units, you can totally cap it.
Right. But that's, that, we were moving with the assumption of like, we need affordable housing, people want to live here, we want to continue to make it. And I think we need to, we, North Star, but also as we have these conversations, is to still be mindful to those who aren't bought into that, won't be bought into that, because it's not one direction, there's multiple perspectives, and I think that's, was one of our takeaways.
But I didn't get the feeling, though, at the, at that workshop, that, you know, the citizens were bringing their pitchforks and, you know, ready to, you know, you know, fight for, you know, I mean, there were just a little, few people who were a little bit concerned, but I didn't hear tons of concern, you know?
I think in general, but that's what, the point is, it, when, one of the great things about the vision process was you felt at the end that there was consensus among the group. It wasn't 100%, but there was general consensus, and that's what we're trying to get to.
I think, I think we're just trying to hear some opinions, and we'll, we'll make the consensus of, of what we've heard collectively, right?
I think, so I told, I, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying, and as probably everybody knows, I love the point that Wayne made, which, oh, sorry, turn my, turn my video on. I love the point that Wayne made about keeping in mind people who don't live here. I, I think Mitch's sort of counterpoint is well taken, too, that yes, you know, the, the point of the comprehensive plan is to listen to residents today, not potential future residents, but I do think keeping in mind potential future residents as part of the vision for the town, you know, we need to make a town that will appeal to people who want to live here so that we can get the benefits out of them living here that we want to get. I do, I also think that there was utility, at least in my opinion, from having Jeff do a little bit of education. Sure, maybe we, or he, you know, he and then we as panelists, maybe, at the royal we, I guess, because I wasn't panelist, but I think there, there is value to sort of saying some of the things and bringing people up to speed on some of the technical parts of this, because I think if we just go and have workshops and try to get community feedback, we're generally going to get a broad mix of feedback. I think a big part of this is going to be education to get buy-in from the community and trying to explain this types of policies that have worked in other places, the sorts of factors that go into housing shortages, the sorts of fixes that we might have on a practical level. I think that is all helpful for the public to hear. Yes, it's not going to reach everyone, but I think that I did see value in that part of it. And I think that, you know, we do have a pretty good amount of feedback at this point. We've had a lot of workshops, we've had a lot of, you know, various planning processes, and I think at some point, we're going to have to sort of listen to the, to the Jeff Levine part of it and the policy kind of nitty-gritties part of it, and just sort of, as I said at the meeting, put our thumbs on the scale, because it's not like we can choose growth or no growth necessarily, it's that we have one relatively limited tool in land use policy to sort of tilt it one way or another, rather than say yes or no. So I see, I see, you know, mostly positive stuff coming out of that housing workshop that, yeah, there's a few people who are concerned, but it's not like we're going to find a developer who's going to build 1,500 unitments, you know, in a year, and all of a sudden the town is going to have 1,500 new residents, you know, that's just not going to happen. So I think, anyway, I saw value in, in Jeff, but I think, you know, the concerns of the board are valid, too, valid, too, and I, I just sort of look forward to moving forward.
Caroline is at Depodia, and she might want to say a word, and I'm just mentioning it, Sam, because you, I know you can't see her, so.
Is it my turn? Thanks, Cecilia.
Yeah, it's your turn.
So we switched the format of the housing workshop. We asked North Star to think outside of the box, because after the first workshop, we got some constructive feedback from the community that people are tired of putting dots on posters, because we've done that about the climate action plan, and we've done about the downtown vision. And to us, it's not dots on posters, but to people's, it just feels like dots on posters. And so people said, we want to have a community conversation. So we threw that at North Star, we said, we're switching it up. This is what we want to do. And so we evolved into this new format to try that, you know, I thanked them for, because it was totally out of their comfort zone, and I thought housing was the right place, because I think as a community, we started a housing conversation. It, it didn't continue, you know, various things in life get in the way, and so it was a really good opportunity to restart the conversation about housing. I think you have good comments that staff in North Star had a, you know, debrief after, as we were all on board at. I think Mitch, you hit an important one, you know, we looked at the pan, we struggled with coming up with the right panelists with the resources we had at hand in our team, and we wanted to not come forward with too big of a panel for various reasons, but not too big of a panel with the same opinions. But as we heard some comments in the room, I think it would have been good to diversify that panel. And if we were to have another housing forum, even outside of this process, I think that's a very good observation, and we need to add different opinions to the mix. I did feel that we needed that three-minute timer.
Yes.
It would have been really beneficial, both for the public asking questions and for the panelists to maybe have one or.
That might have solved a lot.
One or two panelists answer, but not all three, and.
Right.
Shut them off at the timer, just like, we've all been shut off. So I think we got some good feedback on that. I was still overall happy. The only time I ever get 100 people at the meeting is when they hate a project, so the fact that we had 100 people at a housing meeting for a comprehensive plan, I think was a win, you know, it's more than we had at the first meeting. So, but I think we learned some changes. So when we get into the next item, you'll hear a little bit how we are morphing the format yet again, and I think we'll morph it to the end. And so although I know some of us wanted to hear more from the community and more community conversation, it's important, it's an important part of the process, but we also are working on a comp plan, which has certain things that we need to do, and that was just one step in this process that North Star is building upon. So Charles, I'm going to throw it back to you and put you on the spot. Can you just clarify the, for the board, like? Can you just clarify for the board, like, you know, to us, we were frustrated a little bit, because, you know, we wanted certain conversations and wanted certain things, but you needed to get certain things out of that meeting, and you needed to get them out of that meeting to build into the process and to prepare for the future land use workshop.
Yes.
So can you just shed light on for the board what you got out of that meeting and how you're using it in the process? Because I think it's really important.
Yeah, and it connects to the environmental workshop, too. It's, we are building this towards, you know, the big outcomes of the comprehensive plan are goals, policies, implementation. But the big, a big piece of it is that future land use map. You're probably familiar with the current future land use map, says where there's, at a very basic level, it shows where growth should be concentrated, what should remain rural, and some towns and communities have transition zones, which is like a mix between the two. What the housing workshop did allow us to know is how comfortable is Freeport with growth. We know that there's a downtown village plan. We know that in some capacity, growth and housing, economic development should be concentrated in the downtown village. But this isn't a downtown village plan, this is a townwide plan, this is the comprehensive plan for Freeport. So we're trying to figure out as planners, land use planners, but with, you know, thinking about the environmental workshop, where should we be conserving open space? Where, you know, if there is to be growth elsewhere in Freeport, where are people comfortable with Freeport? And we're trying to push people outside of their comfort zone just to consider where we should do it. Should South Freeport become the next dense location? Or should we say, let's, you know, grow the downtown village? Again, these are just a little provocative. I don't think that South Freeport is going to become a downtown urban core. But what we're thinking about is where is growth going to be in Freeport? We know that it's a very, you know, for lack of a better word, rural, single-family community outside of the village, or outside of the Route 1 corridor. But we're trying to gauge for that future land use map where there should be growth. In a similar way, for the environmental workshop, we're going to be, one of our outcomes is, what do we really want to conserve? What do we want to prioritize? If we're prioritizing open space in this area, does that mean we need to, can we, we can't have growth there? We need to protect our natural resources. So again, there's a lot of, you know, intersection between the comp plan, housing, the economy, because if, because if you want to grow the economy, you need people to work here. We found out when we went through the economic inventory, that people, it was only like 750 people were living and working in Freeport. Most people were commuting to Portland, most people were commuting in from, out of Freeport to work here. So if we want people to live here and work here, we need to get housing for them, we need jobs for them. It all blends together, and the future land use plan says, that's where the growth is going to be, at a very basic level. And it kind of can guide future policies, not only in the comp plan, but also for, you know, for planning board ordinance revision in the future, for site plan review processes. It has a huge impact, but we're just trying to gauge the public's opinion before we really start locking down. Their feedback is supposed to help us help the board in writing and drafting these policies and drafting a vision. Because again, this isn't a North Star comprehensive plan, it's the town of Freeport. So we're trying to, you know, facilitate this process, get a lot of the feedback. But to, you know, Mitch's point, to what Caroline was saying, what we're doing is trying to get feedback from previous workshops, mold it into the next one, and then keep learning from it. And I want to pause before I jump into the environmental workshop, if there's any questions at this point about kind of the process, how this all connects into it. But I do think what we're going to be getting into, you know, in five or 10 minutes, is that visioning process. And it's going to start, you know, bringing together some of those questions, some of those thoughts and the feedback we've heard.
And one other thing I'm going to ask you to clarify for the board that I think there's been a little bit of confusion on. So what I hear from the public is, everybody loves Mentee. They love using the app in the room and seeing the numbers fluctuate and seeing how it live responds. Can you talk about, a little bit, just about Mentee and how it's used as a tool and what those results are used for, if anything? Because that's good for the board to know, especially where we kind of leave that open for the next.
Yeah, a lot, those are, it's, it's hard to, Mentee is something we started doing, at least in my experience. It was for the workshop, that's the first time I used it. And our goal with Mentee is to get people, you know, engaged. Not everybody wants to speak at a public meeting, let alone if there's 20 of us in the room. But if there's 100 people, neighbors, friends, you know, some people don't want to share, like, an opinion they have, they might not have that knowledge. What Mentee allows us to do is gauge the audience in front of us. We, a lot of our conversations, or at least what I was trying to do as a facilitator, is see especially that dot exercise, is like, where do you want growth in Freeport? A lot of the answers were in the downtown village, but then you started seeing dots coming up elsewhere. And that can kind of frame, you know, future dialogue, future conversations. When it comes to future metrics of Mentee, again, it's only, it's similar to the survey question. It's a small representative population of people who are in the room, who attended that meeting. So it's not, you know, truly reflective of Freeport, it's not going to be reflective of the exact demographics. But what it does is get people responding to these specific prompts at the housing. We were saying, like, what is your priority? Is it affordable housing? Is it housing stock? Is it housing location? Like, what, when you, when the people in the room think about housing, what are we getting? So yes, we have panelists who are answering questions, taking their time answering the questions, being very thorough with their expertise, is a gentle way to put it. But we're also, we're still getting that feedback. And so instead of 54 people all saying, like, oh, to piggyback off this, I really think Freeport should be in the village, we get all that answer at once. So although we're not hearing them speak, you know, fully about their opinion, we still got, you know, 100 responses to eight questions. And then we were able to do some cool things with Mentee, like, on a scale of one to five, where do you rate, like, how do you prioritize this? And it allows people to, like, engage more softer, to listen. It is anonymous, so we're not tracking people's names or emails, so people feel comfortable just throughout the meeting, take out their phone, answer it. It's not the, you know, it's not people stepping up to the podium and giving an honest three minutes. It's just quick responses to prompts that can help, you know, guide us in supporting the planning board in developing a vision. Or just kind of, if we want to go back to when we started doing, like, housing policies and goals, we can go, we can open up those results and say, well, at the meeting while we were talking about where housing should be, we had a lot of people say downtown village, but there was also some Route 1 south that people brought up, so maybe we can consider why people would want housing there. So it's just a, it's a really a cool tool to get people more engaged in it.
So just to clarify, it's a tool used for the workshop to give feedback from the workshop. It is not impacting what we started the meeting with tonight, which is the stagnant survey data from the 500 people, just to clarify.
Yeah, that's just part, it's just going to be connected to that workshop. The survey was separate.
So then what are your goals for the next workshop?
That's a great question. So we, I think what we heard, and luckily FB Environmental, Maggie is a Freeport resident, so she attended the housing workshop, had similar thoughts to a lot of us. So we're trying to keep the presentation shorter, I think, especially for the environment resources, we had these conversations, conversations. There's a lot, that's a lot of hard data. That's like a certain amount of eel grass, you know, how stable is the coast? Maggie is going to be there to kind of walk the public, walk the planning board through a lot of that more dense data, that what does this really mean? So I think that for that, having her there as an expert, she wrote, her and her team wrote the chapter, the inventory chapters, to give a little bit of feedback. But also, one of our goals here is to connect this to the climate action plan, although it's not adopted, it's still kind of a essential part of these natural resources, a part of this comprehensive plan. So we're trying to integrate some of the climate action plan goals and outreach with our comprehensive planning. So going, where is, where is that intersection of the inventory chapters, those climate goals, but also what we can accomplish through the comprehensive plan? What we're going to, the quick format here on the, here on the slide, is we're going to be starting with that 30-minute, hopefully shorter, presentation with some Mentee questions. We're going to go into a presentation Q and A, because we feel that having people ask questions directly about the presentation will be a lot more helpful, especially it's going to be, we didn't have that, we didn't have, like, what does this mean? How is this beneficial? To kind of get people, get any, help clear, set people on the right path, clarify any questions. Then we're going to move into 30 minutes of tabling activities. So town staff, North Star staff, and FB will be chairing tables where we've prepared three prompts to get people talking, thinking about where are people affected by, you know, environmental, is during storms, does your culvert flood? Is there a street, is your commute impacted by rain or snow on a bad day? Thinking about where in Freeport are important areas for open space, where should there be more open space? Then we're going to ask people to, you know, talk about the broad goals of the climate action plan. So have people rank and prioritize to say, you can't choose, like, the climate action plan has nine large categories. Choose your top three. Tell us why those three, those three mean the most to you. In a similar way to what we're looking, like, to get that feedback about, just like, what are people's top three? Because there's some people who are like, I care about all nine goals, or there are going to be some people who care about zero goals. Some people might come in and be like, I don't like those eight goals, but, you know, this one goal resonates with me. And that's the type of feedback that's going to be very helpful for, you know, how can we, you know, take a larger step back from the climate action plan, talk about our natural resources and comprehensive plan, and put that in our vision, goals, and policies? And then we're going to turn it back after the tabling activities and go into a community conversation, which we did not really have, that we were kind of, I think, David, you were saying, we were just getting into at 8:00 PM. We want to get there by, you know, 7:30. We want people to have had their first 15 minutes to speak. And then we're really, we're not going to be doing a panel like we did last time. It's going to be more of just like, you guys start, let's start talking about what does this mean for our natural resources? We have, we'll be prepared to prompt people, obviously. We don't know if it's going to be 100 people. It'd be great if we got 100 people again, but it's not likely we're going to have that much more. So we're prepared for conversations, but we're going to give people more opportunity to speak, and that's kind of what we feel that we wanted more from the housing workshop. And that's what we're going to do for the environmental workshop and the future land use workshop as well.
So first of all, I'm sorry for being ornery. And all of this sounds good. My suggestion is that if we had very clear, and I think it would go for the housing one, but for this, for the future, if we have very clear questions, you said a few as you were rattling through, like, where do we want more open space? Where is the open space less valuable? What are the top three climate action plan components? I mean, if we, if everybody could go in there and the public could be said, these are the questions we're wrestling with and we want your opinion on, I feel like you have to, or you put a straw man out. People don't, you know, if you say, what are your ideas, people won't be able to answer it. But if you say this or that, they will, or...
There could be a handout right when you walk in. Here's what we're going to be talking about. Think about it.
That's what we need you to comment on.
I thought Charles offered a great straw man for, you know, make South Freeport like a really bustling downtown.
Correct. I mean, it's
That would really get people fired up.
That would get conversation going.
I think we should pave Corey Woods.
The market is great.
But I think it's a great point. It's like, yeah, giving, giving a sort of like, yeah, concrete scenarios that people can react to is, because like Caroline said, you know, you get 100 people when they hate a project. Not that we want to think, propose things that people are going to hate. That is certainly not the idea, but it is, it does sort of illustrate the point that it's much easier to react to a concrete proposal than to, you know, show up to the proverbial blank page.
I mean, it goes to us, too. Like, we're about to turn the page to go to visioning, and I'm trying to figure out, well, besides inventorying, what are we supposed to be visioning about? What are the, what are the issues we have to be wrestling with?
Yeah.
And I don't think it's clear yet, you know?
Right. And I think that's what, before we jump into the visioning, so it's a great segue, I needed that like two minutes later, but we'll hold on to that thought. David, we're going to have, we want people to be prepared, because we're going to assume that not everyone has read the climate action plan. Yes, a lot of the people in that room will be staunch supporters, may have worked on it, may have been part of like a climate action committee, sustainability committee, but also there are going to be people there who don't even know it exists. So we're trying to meet people where they're at, but we're going to have, you know, those questions in front of them before they go to the presentation. Ben and I are going to walk through, like, the tabling activities at the top of the show. So we're going to, like, we don't want to throw people in in, like, the seventh inning and be like, all right, now, the game has been going on for this long, but you're in now. We want people to, and that's what Mentee helps facilitate, gets people thinking, gets their minds moving. But we're going to, we're going to make sure we have that ready.
Can you, can you make that, can you do more with that Mentee app? I mean, can you set up a separate survey that, I mean, have all the questions you want answered, you know? I mean, I think you've got a captive audience there.
Yeah. We're, we are, it's a new platform for us, and it has a lot of capabilities. I know from the first workshop, we just had multiple choice, but then it had the ranking thing, it had the sliding. We're really working with it, kind of, as we keep going. I think it's hard, because we're trying to have the presentation cover the inventory chapters and not be focused on the Mentee, but maybe I can chat with Ben, Maggie, and whoever, Caroline ended up, but she's over there now.
Yeah, I mean, I guess not, you know, almost like, you know, you'll incorporate the Mentee into your program that you're going to have.
Yes.
But almost, you know, on a, on a side, like, you have a side, you know, survey or a set of questions that maybe it doesn't come up during the
Yeah.
But people have access, and if you want to answer them, could do, I don't know, it just seems like another opportunity to get more information. It's, I mean, I think it's clever.
Yeah. We'll, we'll come back to that. Well, noted. I think that's a good idea, and it's a, it's a cool tool, so it's fun. Cool. Mitch, great segue. The visioning process. So what we, what I want to just touch, we're not going to go through, like, each one of these, we've talked a little bit about tonight, is what is the visioning process? These are the five, you know, steps we've worked towards over the last eight or nine months. We worked with the planning board on the inventory chapters, we've sent around the survey to the town, we had our daring, data sharing workshop behind the scenes. We've started doing our public and stakeholder outreach, which we don't have for you at this time, but will be part of, more of part of the goals. We have a lot of stakeholders reviewing the inventory chapters, providing their expertise, their knowledge. So it shouldn't have too much impact on the visioning process. We had the housing, we're about to have the environmental workshop, and we're also going to have in November the future land use workshop. And all of these, you know, they all accomplish specific topics, like housing, environmental workshop, the future land use workshop, as I mentioned before, talks about the future land use plan, where's growth. The vision is something that's a little bit more broader. As a comprehensive plan that consists of, you know, all those 13 inventory chapters, the vision sets the broad framework for the strategies, the goals, the metrics, the implementation. It's kind of saying, what is Freeport today? What do we, what does the community want Freeport to be in 15, 20 years? A good example of that is the current comprehensive plan has a vision. And we sent around some questions in September, and as well as a copy of the current comprehensive plan, I think it was called like Vision 2020, something like that, or Freeport 2020. And I think that's a good place to start, because that's an example of relatively, like, 2011 is not, is only 12, 13 years away. It set a pretty large framework for the conversation, or for the future work. So one thing that North Star likes to do as part of the visioning process is to take a step back, look at what the previous vision was. What did that try to accomplish? Did it accomplish it? Where did it succeed? Where did it not succeed? And how can this new vision that, you know, we're going to help, North Star is going to help the planning board craft, but how is this reflective of the community? You know, it's hard to juggle, there's a lot of different opinions in the town, but generally, the vision kind of sets the chart, sets the chart, the course forward and puts Freeport on a path to start accomplishing the goals that are laid out in the rest of the comprehensive plan. So the planning board will be developing a vision over the next few months. What we're going to be doing is hopefully by the November workshop, have at least, you know, a paragraph of it or some, you know, big ideas for a vision, throw that to the community, see what they say. And then when we come back in December after Thanksgiving, we're going to have a good conversation about what people felt about the vision, what are the big ideas, what are we missing, and kind of everything that wraps around that. The vision isn't one paragraph, it's not one sentence, it's not really productive. It's usually four or five paragraphs that really speak to the core values of Freeport, and how in 2040 about, in 2035, 2036, where is Freeport going to be? How have we accomplished, you know, setting goals for housing? How have we, you know, revitalized the downtown? How, how is Freeport, you know, conserve more land? What are the metrics that we set today? Have we achieved those in 2036? But what I do, what I think is a very, you know, valuable exercise, how I want to spend the rest of the night, is talking about that 2011 vision. So the first question is, and for Sam, if you can't see it, I'll read it for you. How well has the 2011 vision aligned with the town's actual growth and development since the adoption of the last comprehensive plan in 2011?
I don't have it in front of me. I mean...
Thank you for reading that, Charles. To be honest, I have two plates of food in my left hand for children that are going on the table right now. I think it would get like something, like on a scale from one to 10, for me, we'd get like a right, right in the middle. I know that seems like a cop out. Maybe, maybe like a four, not a great grade. And I think it's obviously not the fault of, you know, I'm sure there's, there are some things that we could pin on, you know, town policy or things that could have been followed through on more thoroughly, but I think, you know, there's economic factors. There's things that are way outside of our control as a town and certainly as a planning board. But I think hopefully next time around, if we set some more concrete goals, then we can at least point to our policy changes that we've made to try to achieve those goals. But, I mean, we definitely have done some things. You know, I know we've changed density in downtown. We've tried to tweak things to promote, to promote growth in the growth areas. I think, yeah, we have not been successful in creating housing downtown, certainly, or really a lot of other places that aren't, you know, quite expensive. But, yeah. Doesn't, doesn't get, doesn't get a great grade, but I think a lot of people have also done a lot of good work on it, so.
Do you think that this vision, so I'll go through it. There's, the first category is Freeport would continue to be a desirable place to live by. Freeport would be responsible stewards of the environment. Freeport's economy would remain strong and stable. Freeport's energy needs would be met. Freeport's transportation needs would be met. Freeport's tax base would best accommodate growth by. That's what in 2011, the community was focused on. So just to go back to the question is, how has this aligned with the town's actual growth and development since the adoption? And I can open up to these two other questions too. So what specific achievements or successes can be attributed to the goals outlined? And in what areas has this 2011 vision fallen short? Sam, I do want to respond to one comment. I think comprehensive plans can't plan for, you know, major recessions for COVID. So I think for the purpose of the vision, Freeport didn't expect like a global pandemic, and that's fine.
Right. That's what I'm trying to allow for.
Yeah.
You know, like, the grade is the grade, but there are reasons for it that, you know, are outside of the control of the comp plan or any other town policy. Town document, I shouldn't say, because the comp plan is technically policy, right?
That's what I was going to say. You know, goals and results can often be very different regardless of, you know, how well we do our jobs here, because, and the pandemic is a perfect example. We didn't foresee a downturn in the retail sector in Freeport, which was pretty substantial. I'm sure that wasn't what was desired in the 2011 plan. So, but on the other hand, everything we do here, you know, we specifically state that it's consistent with the existing comprehensive plan. So it has that effect of making sure we don't do things that are contrary to the goals in the plan, and everything we do is consistent with it. But so to the extent it's within our control, you know, it serves, it has served that function.
So just looking back over this, I think that it would be good to score progress. My guess is that the goals are not going to be very different. That they might be a little bit different, but not...
Like the new goals?
The new goals will likely be pretty similar to this.
Why, that, do you think that, just looking at this vision, that those goals were achieved, achievable?
And that, that's where I was going, was that I think that if you took, you have to break it apart. Because for instance, on encouraging the expansion of the creative arts, I think we've done pretty well. Made huge, I mean, there's more to do, that'd probably still be on the list, but it, but you could give us a pretty good grade for that. But allowing a variety of neighbors, housing types at a variety of prices, I mean, I guess you give us a, a, a bit of a grade because of some development that's taken place, I mean particularly Cross Street. I mean, that did expand the type of housing available, but that's, other than that, there have been no progress.
And do you think, I guess I would even take a step back, is just to that bold line that I have up on the screen, do you think Freeport has continued to be a desirable place to live?
I think it is. Oh, it is a desirable place to live. I think there's no doubt. I mean, some people like it, some people don't, but prices are up. That's a sign.
But I think when we think about some of the feedback we heard at the housing workshop, it's, the goal in 2011 was to make Freeport a desirable place to live. But some of the feedback we heard is, hey, we don't want growth. We, or some of like, we said minimal or no growth. Do you think the, the vision is reflective of, you know, some of the feedback you've heard? Like, what, in thinking, we're trying to frame this in the conversation of crafting a new vision as well. So if Freeport is a desirable place to live in 2011, you've, you know, made it nicer, but is it, does desirable mean you want it to be accessible to people? That you want it, when we say it's minimal or no growth, how does that balance with that?
It could be desirable and totally inaccessible, which is, which is what it is now.
Right.
Very desirable, but very hard to access.
Incidentally, it is important to point out in that minimum, in that note, the one that said minimal growth, wherever that was.
Yeah.
Pretty interesting chart, but that represent, all of the other choices were growth. It was just what kind or how. So if you look at it that way, it was only 25% that said minimal growth, less than 25%. And the 75% that had growth of one type or another in their mind.
Yeah.
That's page 13.
To the second one, I would ask the same question as like how, and I would go ahead and say Freeport has done an excellent job, but have Freeport been responsible stewards of the environment? I think you can even expand that too. Has there open space and trails and connectivity?
Even there, you have, you have to break that apart, because on the natural side, I think we've done really well. On the historic resource side, probably not so well.
And then outside of COVID, the, this comp plan had a big, you know, it's a little tourist, tourism focus on retail. And obviously, outside of the pandemic, you can't really count for that, but maybe put yourself in the shoes of yourself in 2019. How, in the, in the short eight years after the comp plan was adopted, how had Freeport, how was your, the planning boards work, whether it's ordinances, zoning reworks? Did that, you know, support a strong and stable economic downtown?
I'm not, you're on this, the, the economy strong by?
Yes.
Is that what you're trying to look at? Well... Well, I mean, if you want my opinion on what we should do about the economy here, is we need to make it more, you know, move it away from just straight tourism and, and, you know, make some professional jobs, you know, in the area. Mix, mix that, you know, even downtown, mix the use into, you know, other things besides just retail.
All right. And I would just point to that last question on the board. So in what areas has this vision fallen short or become outdated? Whether, to Sam, to you, to, like, COVID was unplanned for, but it was real and had very lasting impacts on everyone. So how has this vision become outdated, whether it's because of COVID, or how has it fallen short otherwise? And I think, David, your point is...
There's lots of changes that have happened in the last 10 years. A lot has changed.
That's why we redo the comp plan every 12 years, so.
Yeah. And, you know, the rise of, of internet commerce as opposed to brick and mortar stores is one of the, one of the big factors that even predated the pandemic and something we can't control.
Do you think there's anything that in your work had that, you know, you've looked at the 2011 comprehensive plan and a rezoning and something that can be directly attributed to those vision statements that I just had on the screen? That like Freeport was really focused on, you know, making it a desirable place to live? You know, focusing on the economy, being environmental stewards? Has that, was that successful as part of the vision? Do you think that if the comp goal laid out, you know, there are specific goals in the plan, but the vision itself was saying, this is what we're going to focus on? Do you think the vision was successful?
It's good armature. I mean, those, those things are important, but I, and I don't think anything's missing. I think they cover everything, but it's, it's what's going to be put on that is, that's always nebulous, so.
I think I sort of was trying to go in that direction. Like, I, I don't think the goals are going to change too much. A few will change, and we can go through them. I had the question about, are we supposed to be in this format? About what makes it a desirable place? What makes it an economy? Or is that, that's an open format?
That's, the, the vision's going to take a format. My next question was going to be, this format is a big idea, bunch of lines. What the vision we're thinking about is more of like, is this what Free, like, what is Freeport? Like, we can make it a couple paragraphs being a little bit more direct. You said this was nebulous. Do you want a vision that is clear and concise and to the point about, hey, there's a lot of things going on in Freeport, but here are the big three? So...
Oh, I guess it's more specific, from, from generalizations to specifics.
That's the point. So I feel like the issue is the next layer, not this layer. This layer is fine. We can, you know, arrange it a little bit and change it a little bit, but I don't think that any of the tactics that would do some of these things were laid out and implemented. Now, some of that is the course of current events, and I'm not trying to damn anything. I'm only saying that if we want a variety of neighborhoods and housing types, I would hope that the plan would be very specific about what that requires the town to do.
Exactly.
And forces the town to make those changes to make that happen.
Well, that, and that's what the comp plan has.
If we want to protect historic resources, what are we going to do about it? And it didn't really say it. I went through the whole, you know, comp plan of 2011, and it said, we'll consider doing this, we'll consider doing that. It didn't say, do this, do that. And I know it can't be completely prescriptive, but it can say, these are the tools that will accomplish that goal.
I think it's important to remember that the, that's a, that was the previous comprehensive plan. So I just wanted to focus on that vision, but you bring up a good point, Mitch. It's, this vision outlines the goals. When you talk about, Wayne was bringing up, we do a lot of work, so technically, everything we approve is consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's, that's true, hopefully true. But the goals and the policies that we're going to be talking on the next step will kind of dovetail nicely with this vision. So the vision, you know, provides a general overview of the town, says this is what Freeport should be in 2036 or by 2040. And then the goals are, I know you want to get to the next goals, you want to start saying, we need to do X, Y, and Z.
Right. I just want to make sure by the time this is done, you know, it, when, when, when this plan laid out growth areas, did any rezoning take place after that?
Well, I...
Because it should have.
Well, that's a...
If these are the growth areas.
That's an implementa, and we're, we're getting far ahead, and we're focusing on the vision tonight, but...
I'm with you, but, okay.
But does that vision, you know, to the, to your point that, does it dictate, the vision, the future land use map, the goals and policies, all have to be on the same page? Or else you have a comprehensive plan that is, you know, vague, nebulous, not really helpful for the community. So what we're trying to craft in this vision statement, and I think we're pointing out a lot of, you know, the weaknesses of a vision like Freeport currently has. It's that it doesn't really help frame a future land use map. But it's not just the future land use map and growth that the comprehensive plan does. It talks about housing and economy. So we want to make sure that the vision can support those goals and economies, that the comprehensive plan, so the planning board, whether it's this board, a future board, a committee, the council, that people can look to that plan and be like, it's clear what the community came to consensus, consensus on. So once you have an adopted plan, you know, that's going to be really that guiding document. And our intent, and what North Star usually tries to do with this vision, is make it something that is truly reflective of Freeport, so that you can, you know, frame that rest of the document, so that when we go to the future land use workshop in November, we have some pretty, you know, half-baked, general ideas, but stuff that's coming from the planning board, stuff that's coming from the survey, if that makes sense. Because I think that the next two questions that I have, and I think this will be a good way to, you know, end this conversation, is what has your, how has your perception of Freeport changed since 2011? Does the vision still reflect it? Because I think when, Mitch, I want, really want to push back to you, say, like, we could just use these goals. It's like, when I look at it and based on the feedback even from the housing workshop, these goals don't accomplish even, even a minimal growth. It's making Freeport a desirable place to live, but to me, based on what we're talking about in terms of growth and, you know, economic development, doesn't, it, it might miss the mark. It might be difficult to say, we're going to make it a desirable place to live, but does desirable mean affordable?
More, yeah.
Do you just want to say affordable? Or if you want to say our growth isn't a downtown, it's like, maybe it's not. So that's what we're trying to, you know, go through, so Wayne.
Well, you know, that's the very problem. As long as your goals are nebulous and debatable, it doesn't necessarily accomplish results. So to give you a very specific example, let's say affordable housing is a very important goal. We could say, well, we could probably do a lot better if we could raise the height limit of buildings, but that's not going to foreclose the debate, you know, next month or next year, that we don't want to have tall buildings here. So it doesn't resolve the issue. You know, if there are ways to prescribe something that would lead to implementation of a certain type, that would be preferable, but that's a more controversial thing.
Those are the goals.
Yeah, those are the goals. And I think having, taking that next step is like, if we say this, can we do that? It's, the comp plan isn't going to increase height magically downtown, but it's going to allow the community to have these conversations. Because I think when you go to, when you try to have these conversations now, and someone comes in and says, well, the comp plan doesn't say affordable, it says desirable. And maybe 25 feet is desirable, but 45 feet isn't. So it can be, it can be a real hamstring to what you're trying to accomplish, so...
Or maybe it should say affordable.
It does. It says ensuring that workers in Freeport can afford to live in Freeport, and some, no progress has been made on that.
Yeah, so that, that's to the question, like, how, was it successful? And I think from what you're saying, Mitch, is no, we made it desirable, but we didn't, you know...
It might have been if there was, if, if, if it fell on this board and the council and other, to say, these are the steps we have to do to do that. I mean, I guess you put the Freeport Housing Trust's accomplishments as making a dent there.
I want to say we've done nothing, but...
Right.
But I think that's...
They didn't do nothing.
To this, to this first question is like, what, how is your perception changed? How has the community's perception changed? Were people talking about affordable housing like they're talking about affordable housing now or climate action like they were now? And I think these emergent challenges, again, I want to steer you clear of COVID, because it's, it is an emergency challenge that had long-lasting impacts that we do need to consider. But what was the, this vision, what was the comp plan really not helpful with? Where did you feel like you ran the town, the planning board, council, abutted with the, or butt heads with the comprehensive plan in terms of trying to do stuff?
Well, it ran into the exogenous factor of the housing market, supply and demand. Couldn't do anything about that. So that's where you're not going to get to reform.
But I think he's saying, where did the plan not help to accomplish that?
Well, it just can't accomplish it in the face of headwinds that, you know, we can't control.
Yeah. And but then the comprehensive plan...
There's a lot of things we can do to...
We could have changed the height.
Move some of the barriers.
Yeah, so like, when we talk about where, like, as we mentioned to housing workshop, where do you want housing? Let's take a step back and say, where does the town want growth? And if you have a vision in a comprehensive plan that says, you know, we want to concentrate all the growth in downtown, and then five years down the road, you try to go to say like, oh, we want to do a rezoning down here. It's like, well, the, the conference plan didn't say that. So what we're trying to accomplish with the vision and what our goal is to bring to you next, at our next meeting in, it's October, so November, is a couple like, you know, of these like one-sentence vision statements or like elements of a vision statement that can kind of frame it. And what I'm trying to get it at is, so the plan is neb, the, this vision that we currently have is nebulous. It doesn't have any metrics in it. Obviously, the, most of like the heavy metrics and who's going to be doing that are the goals and policy implementation, but we're trying to capture the main objectives of the comprehensive plan and a vision that will inform the policies and goals.
Implementation table.
Yeah, but I do want to kick it back to the board. I mean, is a vision that's, this current vision is three pages, I mean, it's all bulleted, so three pages is generous, but it maybe is a vision of Freeport, a vision for Freeport, something that could be smaller and we let the goals and policies.
You could put it, yeah, I think you could make it in a one or two paragraphs. All things I've been hearing about, the major themes that I've been hearing about town in the one year or so that I've been involved in all this, it'd be one paragraph. And then, and then you can put together your goals and implementation table from there, and I think you'd have a more prescriptive document.
Then, and then if that's, if that's the case, say you did what's, even a one-sentence vision, what do you think that, how, what would Freeport, what would you put in a Freeport vision right now?
It would, it's a lifestyle town that, where we're looking to create a better mix of housing, to continue our, you know, vibrant downtown by, you know, probably a different mix of occupied jobs, you know, you know, get away from all the retail. And while conserving our natural resources, open space, waterfront, and, and in, you know, embracing a climate plan or something. Something to that effect is, is what I would say.
I was thinking, that was an interesting question about what has changed in the, in the environment since 2011. I think that's worth, I mean, I don't know if it's tonight, but it's worth some, I mean, I can think of two or, two or three big things that have changed in the environment that weren't true in 2011. One is the decline in, in, in national retail and tourist, tourist retail, tourist-oriented retail. So there's one. Second one is the increase in the price of housing of all types.
But that's not unique to Freeport.
Not, no, but, but it changes what the town wants to do different. It wasn't as, I don't think the town was as focused on the holes in the market as it is today. And I guess the third one that goes with the first one about the decline in national retail is the, the desire in the public to have more local-oriented retail, which requires the, I mean, it's all fits together, because it requires the housing in downtown and all that. You know, the, one thing would make everything better is restaurants, and that requires people downtown.
That's a, from the, to circle back to the vision, that was one of the things that was written on the board like 10 times, restaurants. Bars open after nine. That's a main issue.
That's a, but there's, you know, that's a, that's a dynamic of people, of the numbers of people in the place. It's, it's mathematically fixable.
Because people aren't going to drive in from outside of the village that much.
Right.
You need people living downtown. If you don't have people living downtown, and if you don't change some of the regulations so it's easy to build something downtown, you know, until you get to that component.
And that seems to be the biggest problem here in town, is, is just, you know, nobody wants to come do anything here for some reason. We got to change that.
Well, because we fight about it all the time.
Provide flexi, I mean, provide flexible regulations that allow creative site and building designs. And I, we have not accomplished that even a little.
Yeah, no, that just doesn't happen. Because we fight about plastic windows, how many windows and how many panes in the window and what color it is and how tall it is and what's the scale and what's the proportion and what's this and what's that? And the developers just say, I want to go someplace where they like me. I'm not going to come to Freeport. Why would I come here and get beat up for two years? And then lose my share?
I'd like to, I'm just looking at the clock and being a little bit mindful of the fact that we have applicants in the room and also quite a long agenda tonight. So I think I would like to respectfully ask Charles if we could wrap this discussion up.
Absolutely.
I think we have some good feedback about the, you know, I think, I like the idea of moving toward a shorter vision statement. I certainly like the idea of, you know, more achievable policy goals, and I think it makes a, it brings to mind for me, just really keeping in mind throughout this process, what we can and cannot expect to achieve with comprehensive plan. I think if we limit the scope of, you know, we can be broad in our vision statement and grand, and we can describe the sort of town that we want, but I think if the policy goals are achievable and we recognize that we, as a planning board, are not going to put on our tool belts and go build a bunch of housing, you know, makes, you know what I mean, right? We're not going to, we, we don't, we don't actually go out and build the housing. But I think if we can be specific about, okay, here are our goals, here are the policies that we want to change to achieve them, and do that for other boards and committees as well, I think we're, you know, we're going to be, we'll find a better place. Charles, you want to take a couple minutes to, to wrap it up and we'll see you, we'll see you next week for the environment workshop?
Yes. I didn't update that slide. It doesn't say August 7th, but I. So again, Monday at 6:00 PM at the Freeport High School is the environmental workshop. It'll be NorthStar and FB Environmental. They drafted our inventory chapters, they made our maps. Would definitely like for all the board to be there. I think what we're hoping for, we'll have staff in NorthStar facilitate, but what we're really hoping for is to have the planning board kind of, you know, participate, don't all sit at one table, don't make like a planning board table and bombard one of the, one of the facilitators of the conversation with your expertise and passion. Spread out, I think it's important for you as board members to engage in the conversation. You are Freeport residents, but also listen, ask questions of others, you know, try to figure out so that when we start coming into this vision, these goals, you can say like, oh, I had this conversation with somebody who brought up this great point. Just really be there. Participate in the mentee questions. We'll try to, I'll see what we can do for a mentee station, maybe for the future land use workshop. I think that's, that'd be a cool activity to figure out. But otherwise, I'm good, I think this was a good conversation for me, at least, it gives me good direction for November. And I'll try to get something over to you before the next meeting. We have a hectic week here. It's been a hectic three weeks with staff, so I appreciate your time and I'll see you all Monday.
Thanks, Charles.
And Sam, I'll see you Monday.
Where at the high school is it? What's wrong?
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, okay.
All right, thanks very much, Charles. We'll move right along to, I forget which, switching between windows here, agenda item number four, which is discussion of a zoning map amendment application by Main Beer Company to rezone a portion of the lot located at Two Stage Coach Road, tax map 23, Lot 44B. The four and a half acre lot is currently zoned as RR1, and the applicant is proposing to bisect the lot so the easterly portion would remain in the RR1, while the other roughly two acres, the westerly portion, would be rezoned to C1 district. We will be excited to welcome Kyle Drexler to walk us through this, but I also want to give Brett Richardson a chance to lead us off.
Thanks, Chairman. I'm Brett Richardson, I'm the development director for the town, and it's my pleasure to introduce this item brought forward by a great Freeport business, Main Beer Company. Just a little background before we turn it over to Kyle. It's important to note that Main Beer Company contributes to the town and the Freeport community extensively. It's been an iconic destination on Route 1, just south of downtown, for over 10 years. It attracts visitors from all over the country. Last year, about 400,000 people went through the doors and then came into the rest of Freeport and supported our economy. They take care of over 100 employees and they're employer of choice because they compensate their people well, and they cover 100% of their health insurance. So they are an attractive employer for the town. Most important for tonight, though, I want to talk about the fact that Main Beer Company has a strong commitment to be a good actor in the Freeport community. From a staff perspective, Main Beer Company has approached this zone change with a spirit of thoughtful collaboration. The zoning change request represents a balanced approach to enable Main Beer Company to stay and thrive on Route 1 in Freeport while maintaining a meaningful buffer between their operations and their neighbors in the rural residential zone. So with Main Beer Company is a critical part of the Freeport, and the staff is forward to working with the board and the applicant in a collaborative approach to reach a positive outcome for the community. Thanks for your time. I'm turning it over to Kyle.
Everyone, so yeah, it's not too extensive of a request here, so really, before I think the applicant gets up and kind of walks through their proposal, what I mostly wanted to cover with you all is just kind of the procedural side of things with a zoning map amendment. So the ordinance allows for applicant-driven zoning text and map amendments. This is purely a map amendment. The applicant's not looking at any revisions to the actual text of the zoning ordinance. So we're just looking at this one parcel just south of the existing business there. You know, if you, if you looked at the zoning map, there's about five parcels in this stretch here on Route 1. The bulk of this corridor in this area is Commercial 1. There's a little stretch here, though, with some of these lots fronting on the Stage Coach side. It's a little awkward, there's a little sliver of a lot that kind of runs right along Route 1 there. But so you have a few lots here that are in that RR1 zoning, even though functionally they're very close to.
Can we see all of that?
What was that?
Can we see all of it? That, that was exactly, exactly my, I mean, this seems very straightforward, but I'm trying to figure out what else on Route 1 is zoned RR1?
I believe.
And why would we make a change for this parcel and not for others in the same place?
So the reason that we would just be looking at this parcel right now is because there's a specific applicant-driven request. And that if it was the town's larger desire to rezone, you know, let's say, this small stretch here of other lots also in the rural residential zone, that should probably be taken up as a separate item outside of an applicant-driven request, just because they could operate on potentially different timelines and, you know, we have this currently in front of us right now. But that doesn't prevent the town, the planning board, or the council from looking at something larger also.
I'm just wondering what, I mean, it's the parking lot, so this is, this is the parcel between the parking lot, between their parking lot and Cantina's parking lot, and the, the next parking lot.
No, not really.
No, not really.
It's behind it.
So if you can see, there's that little kind of strip between, like, south of the parcel that's outlined.
South.
You'll, you'll see that there's a little strip between the rural residential parcel and Route 1. So there's a little stretch of C1.
Where's the parking lot? No, I understand, this is the part to the south of, Main Beer has a fence there, it's right on the other side of the fence. There's a wooded area, that's what they're talking about. But I'm just wondering what happens past the, I mean, I, does this parcel go all the way to the parking lot?
The parking lot is in C1. It's thin, it's a thin, it's a thin sliver there, it's in C1. And then behind it, where it's wooded, behind that lot, behind that parking lot is our rural, is rural residential.
Yeah, those are separate lots. That's what I was saying, that those rural residential lots, they, they would appear to be very close to Route 1, but they're actually, most of the access on those lots is coming off of Stage Coach.
Mitch, when we, years ago, when we rezoned the whole strip down there, we tried to follow the lot lines. So that's why those are in the RR zone, because those were always residential back in there.
Yep.
So when we came down Route 1, Main Beer was commercial, because it was Dutch Village Motel.
Right.
So we just followed the lot lines, everything that was commercial.
So.
The little strip on the front there was Mycroft's, that was Harold Ants, lobster trap manufacturing back in the day. So we just followed all those lot lines right down through, so we wouldn't split a lot. That's what we tried to do about years ago when they rezoned it. That's why it's the way it is. Because those were, those were houses in there that came off Stage Coach Road, or back then Old County Road Extension.
Totally got it now.
So bigger picture, kind of going back to the, the process a bit, the planning board's role here tonight is just a discussion, the applicant wanted to come before the board to kind of get feedback first, ahead of coming for a public hearing. But ultimately, the planning board's role is to make a recommendation to town council based on the land use implications of the zoning map amendment request. So that's really the board's role, would be to kind of think about the, the zoning map change in the context of what are the land use implications of changing, you know, the westerly two acres of this parcel from RR1 to C1? And then they would eventually make that recommendation at a public hearing, after a public hearing, to the town council. We would then go to the council with the request for the ultimate decision. But that's probably enough for me. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any, but other than that, I'll let the applicant who's here kind of walk through why they're looking for this change. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Steve Mills. I'm a resident of Freeport. My kids go to school in Freeport, and I'm also the CEO of Main Beer Company. Happy to open up any questions, I can do a little opening talk if you want. For those of you who don't know, I guess, I'll jump into it. We are located at 525 US Route 1. We moved our business from Portland in 2013 to Freeport, and Freeport has been very good to us. One thing I'd like to point out was, on page 15 of your comprehensive plan is supporting light manufacturing, and we are a light manufacturer. People like to think of us as a place where you come and eat and get something to drink, but the truth of the matter is 95% of our business actually goes out our back door, not our front door. So we have, we do employ over 100 people. We do a wide range of employment from, yes, we have people in, in hospitality, but we also have as many people in production. We have engineers, we have scientists, we have people in finance, we have people in human resources, and we try to be a very good employer, as Brett mentioned, so. That's what we are, and we're busting at the seams, candidly. So we're faced with, what do we do? There's only one logical direction for us to go. We've talked to all of our neighbors, and this is the logical choice for us in order for us to continue to be here in Freeport as we are today, and to grow and outpace the wicked inflation that is upon us at all times, right? It's our desire to be here in Freeport for the next 100 years. And for us to do that, we have to continue to grow. And for us to do that, we need space. We need space. And I don't want to look at any other options here, because we want to be right here. We want to be doing the same thing that we're doing, but doing it even better. We try to be a good neighbor to our community. You've seen some of those letters of support. Some of our, our friends and some other people that we work with are here in support. I imagine a few of them are going to say a few things, so I'll let them say it. But happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Could you say something about the nature of what you're going to use the new space for?
Well, we, we kind of need space for everything, so we, we would love to have it, because then at that point, you're looking at not exactly a blank canvas. I mean, we need parking, there's no doubt about it, right? And we, we need to expand our physical structure, our buildings. The most logical thing for us to do is expand our physical buildings adjacent to, right? We make things, we need to pipe things and move things around. So over there, parking would be, give us the kind of relief that we would need on existing territory. And we like that plan, because A, it consolidates our operation, our physical operation, but it also creates the biggest buffer around our neighbors that we possibly can create. So we would take that approach for sure.
I'm wondering what could possibly be the objection?
No, no issue.
I'd like to hear objections, because.
So if you're busting at the seams, is that a physical operation or is that just parking you're talking about?
It's both, Andrew. Yeah, it really is both. I mean, at some point, we'd be coming before you all thinking, you know, we're going to have to add to our existing building, right? Which means we're going to have to consume some of our existing parking, which means we need to displace some of that parking.
So that's why you're going to displace parking on the plant you have now and move it over there and then add on to where you are?
That's our train of thought.
So you're not going to build a new building on that lot?
No, there's a rumor that we're building a big building, I don't know where that came from, we're not, no, that, you know, as a manufacturer, you want, ideally it's one big square or one rectangle building, right? And you go from one end and then, and start at one end and end at the other. Unfortunately, you know, we, we grew up this way, and so we have to get a little bit more creative than that, but.
I understand.
No, no, that, that, that's our train of thought.
So you just shift and pack it so you can add on the building at some point?
That's our train of thought, yep.
Okay. I mean, the only downside here to me is, it seems, is we're removing a housing unit from.
Well, you know.
From, I think that we are, yeah. There's a housing unit on there.
No, that's being subdivided.
It's over here. This is just woodlot back here. You're not moving the house.
Well, there is a house there on that property, we, we would definitely take a look at, you know, yeah, what would happen with that one particular house. But to your point, rural residential, we are talking about a remap. So RR1 in the spirit of the, the comp plan, there would be two and a half acres of Two Stage Coach Drive, and that's what we're talking about remapping, and 525 US Route 1, those would remain intact.
I, I just didn't know where the house ran through the split.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the high and dry side, and that's, yeah, that's where we look.
I knew they were way back there, but I didn't know how far back. So when you end up with the, the Stage Coach Road law, which will at some point be empty, So when you end up with the Stagecoach Road law, which will at some point be empty or not have a house on it, it'll just be an RR zone, is that going to just be empty?
I think so. I mean, you know.
It went in there, but I mean.
It's wooded there. There's a lot of water that goes through there, you know, and a lot of water that flows into the Harrah's Seacat. So I think trying to go and re-engineer all of that and how that flow breaks and go in that way. And for at least 50 years, I mean, I love how you can recall these things at Freeport. It was one of the benefits of you being here and living here your entire life, but, you know, to my knowledge, other than maybe a pair of boots and that little road there that access, it's relatively untouched for the last 50 years.
Yeah, pretty much.
On that low end. It's just there. And I have the advantage of having an office with a view that looks back there. There's a lot of wildlife back there. It's not the biggest piece of parcel in the world, but, you know, I don't know. I mean, I think down the road, you know, we're not developers, but 10, 15 years down the road, you know, if there's something there that just makes all the sense in the world to do, we obviously, we take a look at it. But, I mean, there's something to be said for just leaving things the way they are in certain aspects.
Can you use that acreage in your square footage calculations?
Which part?
Two and a half, the two and a half?
The RR1 is, to me.
That doesn't help you on your.
In my mind, it's RR1.
I know that.
The offsets are there, we just, it just, it is what it is.
Do you have an offset there?
Oh, I think, I don't know about the offsets. Sebaggo might be able to help us out, answer that question.
Good evening. I'm Kylie Mason from Sebaggo Technics. So we haven't done any area calculations for any expansions. This is really just setting it up, but to your question, absolutely, if we needed to calculate the whole parcel's area, it'd be calculated under the RR1 and the C1, and we average those out. So there would be an opportunity there as well.
Thank you.
Expert?
Yeah, so just to clarify, the, you know, you see the parcel being bisected with the zone change. That doesn't automatically mean that it's split into two lots.
Right.
So it just remains as one lot. All of that lot area still exists. It's just that, you know, if you were to try to build something on that back lot, right, you fall under different dimensional standards and land use standards. But yeah, unless the applicant chose to separately split the lot, it'll all just remain as one with the zone change.
Just tell them the same title.
Any other questions for me? Thank you for consideration.
We've got some.
I'm wondering, is there a public that wishes to comment on this?
We've got some abutters here, so.
Yeah, let's hear.
My name is Lisa Andreessen. I'm in a butter, sort of. I'm on Pine Street. I love me a Maine Beer just as much as anybody else does in town and half of New England. And indeed, it's a great company and know a lot of people who work there. I feel, I just feel compelled to say, this area is very vulnerable to zoning change. We have had to push back and push back and push back against the creep of every time somebody has an idea, it's like, well, we can change that zoning. This makes me really nervous. I see every reason why this is a good idea. You need more parking. Absolutely. Nobody would argue about that. A point about that I would like to make is when you put the most recent addition in in the parking lot that a butts on Pine Street, I came into the town and said, has anybody looked about having that emptying onto Pine Street at the bottom of, as we have called it for many years, Snake Hill? Oh, yeah, no, that's just for employees. They'll just access that. Excuse me. I challenge anybody to do a traffic study there on a late Friday afternoon or a Saturday when a new brand has come out. The cars are lined up all down Pine Street. Doesn't matter that there are little signs that say, don't park here. Nobody's getting ticketed. That is a, it's a hazard, it's a hazard, and it's an accident waiting to happen. And there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of there. Now presumably, that can be mitigated. But it hasn't been mitigated before. It's been kind of like, well, we got this space and whatever, and we'll just park all along the road. Willy-nilly, it doesn't really matter about the people who live there and who have to get up and down those roads, emergency equipment and whatever. And again, those of you who don't live in that area, Snake Hill is better now. They took about two or three feet off the top of it and tried to bank it a little bit, but it is still Snake Hill. And in the winter, coming down over that and trying to walk on it or bike on it, it is madness. And to have another set of traffic coming into there, there's not even a sign. When you're going from Route 1 down Pine Street to go to Snake Hill, there's not even a sign saying, slow down, or there's an access coming in from the right, nothing. It's just, it just happens. So my question would be, if indeed you use this new for parking, what's the access to it going to be? Is it coming off of Pine Street? Is it coming off of Route 1? Where does all of this happen? Who's paying attention to this? And I'm a public policy person. I do this. I'm a nerd about all this. And, but I don't understand, why do we have zoning? What's the point of the zoning? If, well, now I got an idea. I've got a need. We're doing great. And they are. They're doing wonderfully. We have some other big businesses in town that are doing great, and the zones just kind of, you know, it just changes based on who's asking. And you guys are good guys. Not, no complaint about that at all. But I think that those of us who have lived through the iterations of wanting to put a retirement community up on Snake Hill, wanting to move this down to there, moving that over to there, I mean, it's just, we just kind of, people just bought old houses there, there are new houses there, there's expensive property, there's very moderate property, and growth is good. Having jobs here in town is good, and that's a good employer. But if you go along with this, please pay attention to the people who live there and have to drive up and down that or walk up and down it or ride their bikes up and down there. It is dangerous. Thank you.
So if there's a mitigation on the exit out on the Pine Street, is that more palatable to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I don't know why it was never required in the first place.
Can I, I want to piggyback on that. It would seem to me if the parking were moved to Route 1, there would be less traffic exiting. I live off Pine Street, so near you. I walk up there.
Yeah.
So I know. But I don't know if there's parking on Pine Street, why, there's no parking allowed there, right?
Oh, no, unless there's an event when the new, when the new brew comes out.
Oh, it's when they have the events, then of course.
And then it's just nonstop. I mean, it is just bumper to bumper.
Sounds like a public traffic safety issue rather than a, you know, zoning or ordinance issue here.
And the zoning thing, I mean, I'm very sensitive to zoning creep. I'm just also sensitive to this is a Route 1 property we're talking about.
Yeah.
And that doesn't, that seems okay to be C1. It doesn't seem like it affects Pine Street.
You've got RR1, you're moving it to C1, and then you come up just a little bit, and you've got MDR, MDR 2, whatever. We, all I'm just saying is, we've been through this. I've been there, I guess, 50 years, 45, 50 years. Not born in Freeport, but I paid my dues in Freeport, and you mind, you can just see it, you can feel it. And yes, the rising tide raises all ships. The property is all more valuable, it's all good, whatever. People can't afford to live there. You know, it just, everything goes in circles here. I just get concerned, yes, I think absolutely a commercial zone on that side makes a great deal of sense. I don't know what happens when you say, but it's okay, we can just change this to that, and it won't affect anything on this side, the Pine Street side. I just would like to look for some reassurance that, that that's looked at with a great deal of care.
It seems to me that this.
Because I think the commercial on that side makes sense. Yeah.
I think it's a great, it's a great point. And I don't, I know that what I'm about to say is going to sound like we're passing it, or I'm passing the buck at least. It sounds like a lot of these issues are related to site plan and/or enforcement of an existing site plan. So I think that while we, you know, assuming we move forward with a rezone for this parcel, maybe it's a good chance to talk to Maine Beer Company, talk to town staff, and see if there are opportunities to tweak anything in that zone that would change something about the, you know, the site plan review process or make some amendments to it that might sort of address the issues, not just for your property and your direct neighborhood, but where those issues might repeat themselves, other places in town. But it does seem to me like generally, it's an appropriate place, and it sounds like you agree with this, it's an appropriate place for a C1 zone. And so, you know, a way to move this forward might be to say, okay, this is an appropriate use of this, but we clearly have the feedback, and we need to pay more attention to site plan review and what that site plan takes into account. And then also, and maybe it's something as simple as like, you know, if there's a, you know, an exit from the property that exits into a different zone or within a certain radius of a different zone, like a rural zone, then maybe we need to take extra care in those situations. That's just one thought that's coming to me now. But I think that, you know, it's a discussion with staff, maybe it's a discussion with the PRB, but it's also a discussion with town staff about how these things are enforced going forward, because it does sound like that's a component of it, you know. If there's parking that's not being enforced, then that could be a town issue, or maybe a Maine Beer Company, maybe, I'm sure Maine Beer Company would be willing to help with that as well, just knowing that as I do. Couple quick thoughts there, but it seems like the board is sort of broadly in agreement, and folks are generally in agreement that it's a, you know, an appropriate spot for an extended C1 zone. Does that seem fair?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, I was just, can I just real quick build off that site plan point? So I was just gonna, yeah. So the rezone itself wouldn't enable any actual development to take place. Anything there would most likely trigger site plan review process through the PRB. Those review criteria cover things like vehicular access to the site and that sort of thing. So really, yeah, as Sam was saying, that should be the mechanism to deal with those types of concerns. And any project that triggered that review would also trigger another public comment engagement process where we would take in feedback, where we would look at the plans of the actual access being proposed and the implications of whatever the project was. So if there was a building expansion and, you know, we're saying, okay, the site's going to draw in more people than it currently does, how does, you know, that new traffic to the site get handled? So, yeah, not necessarily, it doesn't necessarily have to be dealt with through the zone change. That doesn't mean that it would just be ignored forever. It would still always get picked up in that site plan process, but, yeah.
And would you think that one of the possibilities is if they increase parking, there'll be less of this parking on Pine Street?
Yeah, sure. And that could be. And the applicant might be able to speak better towards that, but from the conversations that I've had with them, it sounded like that was kind of the whole idea, was that they're starting to outgrow the current setup. So making sure that there was good and safe access to any new proposed parking areas seems like, yeah, it would alleviate some of those existing conditions.
I'm Mary Davis, president of FDIC, and I think the thing that is, we brought this, Steve came in to the board and talked to us about his proposal and where his plans are. And I think as both citizens and as cheerleaders of economic development in Freeport, we voted unanimously to support where he's going. One, because it's the right place. It is U.S. Route 1. That is where we want the development. So if there's going to be a place where, and we love the way that he tried to segment the land so that, you're right, it wasn't impacting the environment or the community. They're a very thoughtful company, so we also adore that about them. They're also bringing in a population of folks that we want here. We want the folks who come to Maine Beer because they're bike riders and they're environmental advocates, and they want to live in Freeport. And that's a group that Maine Beer brings here, that we would love to have enough housing to stay here. So for many different reasons, we think this is a business that we absolutely want to keep in Freeport. From working at IDECs for years and years, we had lots of choices about where we went, as does Maine Beer. We want them here. So Economic Development has said, please, 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 support where they're going. We think this is the right company for Freeport.
Sorry, I can't really see the room from my vantage point here on the internet, but if there's anybody else who is.
Yes, someone's coming, Sam.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Sam. We also have one person on Zoom that maybe we could allow a chance to talk after the people who are here in person.
My name's Suzanne Watson. I'm the executive director for Meeting House Arts. I'm also a 20-year resident of Freeport, and I think this is a very desirable town to live in. I can answer the comp plan question from before. But I'm here because we neglected to get a letter into you early enough, but I have a letter from our president of our board, Len Schaefer. And it is misstates a little bit because now that I've been here and heard some of the deeper information, it's not a rezone, and that's what this letter states. It's not a moving the facilities itself, but the parking. I understand those things are misstated in here, and I'll correct them. But I would love to read the letter to you now and say, to enter it in, I agree, there is, this is a no-brainer. Maine Beer has been a generous supporter of the arts and culture here in Freeport, not only monetarily, but their staff, and this has not been mentioned yet, I don't believe, their staff has four hours a month of volunteer time. Every one of the staff is paid to come and help us. For example, they've done photography in our space, they've done event help, you know, support in our space. So I'm just saying that this is a company we certainly want to keep and encourage to continue. And I'm not going to read the letter, but I'd love to hand it to you all if you don't mind.
Hi, I'm Margaret Morfitt, and I'm the co-chair of the Freeport Farmers Market and also about a 40-year resident of Freeport. And I'm not going to say all the things that I might say because it's already been said. It's clear that this is a really great company and really generous with their both financial support and their time. But I thought I would tell you about our experience as the market. So when we first started thinking about having a market, which was three years ago, I went to Maine Beer, among others, to ask them for their support, and they were among the very first to step right up and become a sponsor for the market, and they have continued to support us for the last three years. And then this past year, the market decided that they would try to do a food voucher program to help people in our community who might not otherwise be able to afford the fresh local food that the market gives. So we talked to Freeport Housing Authority, and we talked to FCS, and they all agreed it was a really great idea. So I went about raising $3,000 and with the intention of giving each person in need $15 a week to spend. And then I went around and I asked Maine Beer to pitch in, and they made another donation. This was on top of the one they'd already made for their sponsorship gift. As it turned out, I had grossly underestimated what we really needed for the community. It was incredibly popular, and within the first meeting, we'd used over a quarter of the money we'd raised. And so I told this in passing to Carrie Seaver, who had come to the market just as a, just to see it, and we talked about how hard it was to keep this going, and, but I didn't ask her for any money. We were just talking as friends. And in the meantime, I then decided that what we would do is we would start a GoFundMe project. And I don't know, I assume everybody knows what GoFundMe is. So, and we were asking for $6,000. The whole idea was to just get through this season and make sure that all the people who needed the money were getting it. So it started off pretty well, but it got bogged down. I was discouraged. I didn't know what next steps to take. And then I got a call from GoFundMe saying the campaign had been completed. And it turned out that Maine Beer had made a gift to finish up the whole project, which is a not insubstantial amount. And I, I mean, I was amazed. I didn't ask them for it, they never came to me, it just showed up, I was so happy. And they did it completely on their own, and it strikes me that I can't imagine a better sign of a committed community member than this. And that's why I'm really impressed with the company. I know their general philanthropic focuses on the environment, and I trust they wouldn't do this project if they think it wasn't compatible with the well-being of the town. Thanks.
We have one person on Zoom. If you would like to speak, you can just raise your hand, and I can unmute you. Looks like there's nobody else who wants to speak, so we can move on.
Does that kind of give, I guess I'm asking maybe Steve this question, does that kind of give Maine Beer what they need to move forward here and sort of finalize their plans ahead of? their plans ahead of a public hearing? And does the board have any other questions, I guess, before, you know, or any hesitation to recommend a public hearing be scheduled for this?
Sorry, Sam, I'm not sure. This is Steve. I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm just making sure that you guys feel like you have a path forward here and that you're comfortable, you know, scheduling a public hearing with, you know, the feedback that you've received from the community and letters of support.
Sure. Yes, yes, we do. And I, you know, I think you're going to be excited. I mean, everything that everyone said here tonight, I think it was all pretty good stuff. And I understand the concerns. Obviously, as we go into this plan, you know, I'm a neighbor too. I, I ride my bike up Snake Hill. And we would address those things. I think everything was good, everything's, everyone is going to be very satisfied, the plan that we would bring forward, and it's going to address the concerns that were shared tonight. I really do.
Two, two question, quick questions. I mean, well, first of all, so the process here is we would have to, this can't happen without a public hearing, so the next step is to schedule a public hearing.
Sure.
I think you can see you have general support.
I hope so.
My two questions are either now or at the point that you're bringing a project forward, which I realize is another whole review process. At that point, there could be some kind of give-to-get range to at least police the traffic on Pine Street and parking on Pine Street. Is that the kind of thing that can be done and make that contingent that you guys take responsibility for no parking there or put signs up when you have events that say no parking, like they do in Yarmouth during the, you know, clam festival? They put signs all over it that says no parking?
Yeah, as we imagine what that looks like, I mean, I really do think all this is going to be addressed, including, you know, the cut through, people cut through our parking lot all the time. We don't like it either. It makes us crazy. But we, we have some ideas that I think you're going to see that and go, okay, that's, yep, they thought about that. Yep, they thought about that. And the whole idea is really coming off the one and giving that parking up there for guests and discouraging them from coming down to the lower end and coming through. And I, you know, we would address that for sure. Absolutely, that would be part of, it's definitely been part of ideation, and I don't think that would be cut out of ideation for all the reasons that were brought up tonight.
Conservation on that. Wetland may be another thing that people would appreciate at that time.
Sure. Yeah.
That may be in your intention.
Well, you know, it is, you know, I've told you, we have zero plans to develop that, and that's true. You know, we've, we've conducted the wetland survey. It's a small parcel, but I, you know, I just don't see any reason why we would touch that. I really don't. And, you know, if, you might be wondering, well, when are you going to be back? Right? And I really do think that this is, you know, just building it out in a logical way will be able to service us for decades to come. I mean, we're already, you know, you're talking about just working with the normal confines. If we, what we believe is true, is true. You're talking about us being the biggest, we could build it out to be the biggest brewery in Maine and one of the top 20 breweries in size, craft breweries in the United States, which is not our ambition. But, I mean, there's enough there. We, we believe that to be true.
On that site, that additional two and half acres?
Yeah, with just that additional two and 2.2 acres right there. I mean, you know, we can get, particularly, I love some of the things I heard tonight about building heights and some other things like that. I mean, you know, we would be more than happy to work with you all to minimize our footprint to the extent that we reasonably can, being mindful of our neighbors, maintaining those buffer zones, and doing the best that we possibly can to be a good neighbor. I think if you want good neighbors, you have to be a good neighbor, you know? And we're gonna, we're gonna, I think we behave that way. We try, and we will continue to try and behave that way. I don't like, I don't like cars parked on Pine Street either, or the one, and that's been long gone, candidly. That hasn't happened for quite some time, but I, we don't want to see it back, but we do want to continue to grow, and this will enable us to do that.
Just want to clarify one thing for the board. So if Pine Street is marked no parking per our traffic and parking ordinance, that is something that is on us to make sure it's adequately signed and that it's being enforced. When Main Beer first opened, and they were just super successful, right away, there were parking issues down there. They were a good community member, and they took it upon themselves to work with the town and others to find solution to the fact that they altered their business operations to alleviate that. I've already reached out to the police chief to ask him what's going on down there, because I had not been aware that it was an issue. So we, as the town, need to take that on, and we will. That being said, so during site plan review, if the applicant can demonstrate that they meet the standards of the ordinance, they can put in an entrance. They have to meet site distance and circulation. That being said, you know, the board always takes public comment, and they do have the ability to put reasonable conditions on. And we do have places in town that can be one-way-only, entrance or exit, employees only, or deliveries during certain time. And so I think some of those concerns, as long as they are voiced during the public review process, as long as they are voiced, the applicant and the board can work together to hopefully alleviate some of those concerns. But, you know, they're all good points and things that should be brought up.
Sam?
Sorry, I lost you guys there for one moment.
Yes.
But I did hear most of Caroline's statement about the parking thing, and then I lost just the last little bit. But, yeah, it sounds to me like we're ready to move forward and let's go to a public hearing.
Okay.
And?
Do we lose you again, Sam? Did he disappear?
It looks like he might have just muted himself.
Sam, we're ready to go to next item, I think, if you are.
Sorry, that was, I don't know what happened there. I must have muted myself accidentally.
Okay.
Just kept on talking and it didn't work. Yes, we are ready to go to agenda item number five, which is a discussion of possible amendments to zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. The amendments primarily relate to the exemption of multifamily structures from subdivision review, which is something that main state law allows under Title 30-A MRS. What is that? Section 402, section six, I think. But it also includes several non-substantive text amendments related to cleanup of the ordinance language, which is something we opt into when we undertake these projects. If you'll remember, we talked about this kind of as a part of the LD 2003 discussions, but we didn't want to delay LD 2003, so we're coming back to it now. Cecilia, I know, has done a ton of work on the scenes. So Cecilia, if you don't mind, I would ask you to give us a little bit of an intro.
Yeah, sure. So I know you received this package, and it is a lot, a lot of changes. So you can see it in five different types of changes. One of them is to allow the exemption of certain types of multifamily projects, which can include affordable housing developments from subdivision review per the state, allowing us having that exemption just from subdivision review and moving on to site plan review. And then we also added related standards to Section 602 Site Plan, such as a public hearing for multifamily and requiring proof of financial and technical capacity, because that's what we heard back from the boards as something you recommended. There's also some non-substantive text amendments related to the cleanup of the ordinance language, and these are pretty simple. They, they're not, the intent is, they do not change the intent of the ordinance, you know, such as updating reference documents that might have been outdated, definitions to be consistent with shoreline zoning, gender-neutral terminology and other nomenclatures, such as moving on from town engineer to town peer review engineer. And then, which is a lot of the bulk of the work perhaps on the subdivision ordinance are also non-substantive amendments related to the legal review. So these were recommendations by the town attorneys, just such as adding reference documents to an appendix, deleting the letter of credit template. There's a lot of rewording to better clarify the intent of the ordinance and comply with state rules. And please note that although we are bringing all of this, it is possible that we will still bring, there's still some pending items related to that subdivision cleanup. So please don't be surprised if we come back with further amendments. And then the last thing is transitioning the project review board to digital submission materials, so that you will see on Section 602 is just applicants are submitting less paper copies as the project review board will, has transitioned to reviewing mostly just digital packages instead of paper packages. You know, moving forward, tonight, we're just presenting this language for discussion. We hope to be able to address any concerns that the planning board might have and hopefully set a public hearing to November, at our next meeting, November 6th. And go over some of these substantive changes, because these are the changes that alter the intent of the ordinance, mostly related to the multifamily exemption from subdivision review. And then we can talk about how, you know, what we heard from the project review board and planning board and, and then the impacts of these changes. So I think I noted on the staff report that, or the staff memo, that we, the state allowed this exemption and, but the municipal reviewing authority is the project review board to just make the statement or the finding that our site plan meets the state required criteria. The project review board made that finding at their last meeting, and, but it's up to the planning board to make the actual ordinance changes.
So if I could just understand that completely, that's you're streamlining a process essentially. You're going from almost redundancy in it to, you know, that applicant, you know, only needs to, you know, bring it to this one site plan review rather than to, or to the state, state review rather than to the site plan review. Is that what I understand?
So usually, like, the state considers, like, if somebody would, to propose a new three-unit multifamily dwelling, that triggers subdivision review, and then that person, even if they're in one lot in one building, they would have to go through the process of a whole subdivision review. So the state allows this exemption so that if we find that our site plan meets those state required criteria, that stormwater, sewage, water?
You don't have to go through that review.
Yeah. That we can, instead of making them go through subdivision review, go through site plan. And that can, you know, potentially reduce, it should reduce the number of meetings, especially if it's considered a major subdivision. However, with our 602 site plan, you know, a lot of projects would still have to come in, usually for like a concept as well. And another, you know, change, impact would be that it changes the density calculation if they're not under subdivision. But we can, I will point those out. Yeah, so just to reiterate what I heard from the project review board and planning board, I want to bring this back to you so that you can correct me if we missed something. But what I heard is that we were allowed this exemption, but we're not putting any threshold, so there's no, it's not pending on the number of units or if, whether the multifamily dwelling is served by water and sewer. So it could be, you know, it would apply to a three-unit building or a 300-unit building. We're not really deciding which, the exemption based on the number of units or connection to water and sewer. The other thing that we heard is that it's in one structure, so the multifamily building to be eligible would have to be in one structure, not multiple structures. The planning board also recommended that if a new public way is created, then they should not qualify for the exemption. The project review board thought that it should expand that to any new road, including a private road that, to meet frontage purposes. So that was their recommendation, and we made the changes based on, on the project review board's recommendation. I also heard from the planning board that a public hearing should be required, so that we made amendments to make that a requirement under site plan for multifamily. A sidewalk would not be required, just optional. And I also heard that you wanted us to consider adding standards for financial and technical capacity in the site plan review process. So.
So can you back up for a little bit? This exemption wouldn't be granted if they make a road in?
Right. If they're making a new road, then we're not granting the exemption.
Why would we not do that?
Out of concerns, because we don't have great road standards for new road building.
If it's a private road, what do we care?
I think it's just to protect the development and the greater impact that those kinds of developments would be doing.
Any building have a road?
Caroline's going to straighten me out.
Yes.
Caroline wants to speak on this.
More cookies.
So the planning board had a discussion to exempt situations where a public road was being created, but we have public road standards. So personally, if someone was coming in and creating a development in one building and they had a public road, I know there was a standard they would build to. I know that we would take care of it in the future. When you come in to build a private road outside of subdivision, Freeport has absolutely zero standard. So there was a concern that if somebody were coming in, putting a large multifamily project in, needed a road, and that specifically means like a road and a right-of-way for frontage purposes, they could create a road with zero standards, zero oversight, zero legal requirements, and then essentially, if they condowise it, they could turn it over to people that would buy into that development with really no standard. So that's kind of the view of the project review board. Now, that being said, we had two multifamily development projects downtown. They both fronted on a public road. They both had driveways. They didn't need to put in a road. We had a large project on Desert Road that looks like it has a road, but they didn't need to put in a road for frontage because they had frontage on Desert Road. So if we do it this way, we could look at those all as driveways, which they would have width standards and certain criterias like that, but they're not turning over this something that people buying into it typically are going to have to maintain, take care of, repair, plow, and uphold to a high standard in the future. That was a little bit into the technical weeds, but you told me to set you straight, and I was trying to do that.
Well, I'm still, I'm still trying to figure out why we're concerned about a private road. I mean, there's obviously a reason why we're giving them this discount or this option here.
I think we're concerned for the future people that might buy into that project, buying a road that's built to zero standard and oversight if we take them out of subdivision. At some point, if Freeport goes the route like a lot of municipalities do, where we have private road standards for construction and width and access, then I feel like it really wouldn't be an issue. But today, there is zero standard for a private road outside of subdivision. You can basically do whatever you want. So it's really there to add a protection for the future buyers.
Caroline?
Still don't understand why that's our problem, but it's private property. If somebody wants to buy a house on a road that's not that great, that's really their problem.
But we're doing this.
As long as a fire truck can get in there.
Well, we don't, we can't ensure that without any private road standards. We can't ensure that a fire truck can get in there.
Has that ever happened?
Can get in there. I don't know of issues. I know there's been issues in cases where we've had private roads, not in subdivision, where we've had washouts, and there's been issues in storms, and they aren't built to a standard, and we don't review and inspect them.
I still don't understand. I guess I can.
I understand.
Caroline, it's Bonnie. May I ask a question? Are you concerned at all in the future that some of those private roads may become public? That it would be the responsibility of Public Works to take care of them?
I am not, because to build a public road is a much different standard, has very wide pavement.
I understand that sometimes private roads are built, and then they want to turn them over to the public, and they're not built to those standards, and then you've got a mess.
The town of Freeport has not accepted a public road with the exception of School Street Extension in well over 20 years. A lot of people will be like, oh, let's go to the town. But these private roads and even these private subdivision roads are built to a much, much less standard with less oversight, so the town has not been taking them over. To the fact that when they go through subdivision, they're acknowledging that on the plan, that by approving the plan, there's no intent that the town is ever going to take it over. And so we make sure that there's adequate protections in place for the people buying into it, which quite honestly, the banks look for that now. If you're buying on a private road, they want to see HOA documents, road maintenance agreements. If you're getting. agreements, if you're getting financed. So, no, I'm not concerned based upon our past practice.
I think the simple answer is that the town doesn't have to accept a private road for, for public road-
Correct, and they wouldn't meet our public road standards for the most part.
So, the town would just say no.
Even in subdivision.
Didn't you just make my argument by saying that the bank won't loan money if it's, if it's a crumb road?
Right, so then what do you do? We approved a development with no standard, a crumbing road, no obligations-
The bank is the control.
Yeah, the banks are going to control. You just said the bank controls, the bank won't loan money if it, if they don't have an HOA and a road maintenance fund and all this other kind of stuff, or some kind of a homeowner maintenance thing to take care of the road, so...
I mean, it is really, all we can do is give you our, our guidance and our thoughts. It really is a policy decision. I'm less worried about the public road because we know it's going to be maintained and there's certain standards and more about the private road, and that's really the discussion that the PRB had, because they deal with subdivisions and private roads all the time.
And we yielded to the PRB also because the, we heard from the planning board that you really wanted to hear from the project review board and this was their recommendation.
So, the language was crafted in a way to address concerns of the planning board for situations on a public road and concerns of project review for situations on a private road.
So, the, the project they built on Desert Road, is that, is that, because they didn't need the road frontage, of course they built, what's that road, what's that driveway built to?
So, they actually did, going through subdivision, built, because of the way we define road and street and driveway and a bunch of other things, which I won't bore you on, they built that to a private subdivision road standards with a bunch of waivers. Like, for example, it, they didn't need it for frontage, so it didn't have to be in a right-of-way. I mean, that, I think, if we look at that compared to these two, that's a little more extreme case. And in the situation of this finding, that project would still go through subdivision, so they'd kind of be in the same scenario where under the subdivision ordinance, they're more than a drive, their driveway can only serve two or more units. And then they built a road with a bunch of waivers.
Is that bad?
To build to a subdivision road with a bunch of waivers, not if the board's willing to grant the waivers and the developer's okay with it.
I mean, but is that a bad project down there because they built it that way?
My personal opinion would be that it's not, it just kind of created unnecessary barriers. But that's an issue with correcting the subdivision ordinance, that's still going to be there regardless of this. For units that have multiple buildings, they're still going to go through that process. Yes, that has been something for you guys to, flagged for you guys to look at in the future, roads, driveways, accessway across all municipal ordinances because of the complexity and lack of standards and abundance of standards in other cases.
And perhaps in the future, when we move on, you know, when we're able to clarify road and road standards and perhaps create some for private roads, you know, then we could revise this exemption if the plant, if the planning board finds it fit. So, this could be an incremental step and then maybe the next step is, you know, once we put these standards for private roads, you know, you might then want to revise it. But at the moment, we don't have them, which is why we have the concern.
I think the biggest concern is always having safe access to a site, making sure public safety can get in and out of there. We don't want to see a failure in the future if somebody buys into it either, but safety is one of our top priorities, having some standard for that.
So, Cecilia, I looked at all of the edits and I, I have, I don't know if you want to do it now or another time, but I have like six or seven language issues. One of them is a reference to a statute, which I think is the wrong statute.
I noticed one relates to a wrong statute.
Page six, that's the only edit on page six.
Can I just finish and then we'll walk through them?
Yeah, oh yeah, I didn't realize you wanted to finish.
Okay, great. Because I wanted to still talk about the impacts and to flag a couple of things. And the impact, so we were thinking about the substantive changes would be to, would be that we would ha, actually have these new performance standards on section 602 for site plan related to financial and technical capacity. And those would actually be applicable to any site plan development application. I think it was something that we felt was missing and it was a recommendation.
It was only present in the subdivision ordinance, right? And so, that it got transferred over to this ordinance.
Another-
What would you miss if you didn't have the subdivision review?
Yeah, yes, exactly. There's also the density requirements for multifamily dwellings, including affordable housing developments, that are not in subdivision would then, with these changes, it would default to the space standards for lots that are not within a subdivision. So, it's a different base density calculation, which is hard to tell because every lot is different.
Can you explain this again?
Yes, so, let me try to step it back a little bit. So, you will notice that in all of these zoning districts and almost most of them, there's different space standards or density requirements depending on the type of subdivision, right? Because multifamily usually triggers subdivision, then they're usually subjected to those open space, expanded open space or commercial open space, or village open space standards, which are different for standards for lots that are, for new units that are not in subdivision. And because we're moving them away from these particular types of projects, away from subdivision, they would now default to, to the non-subdivision density requirements. So, just as a general example, right-
Could you give some example of what, how they're different?
Yes, so we could look at the-
Do you follow?
No. This is why we don't have housing. Yep. It's just too complicated.
Yeah, so, so for instance, let me see. Let's open up. So, for instance, in the Village One-
What page, where is?
It's page 46 of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yes, then we will have, there's subsection C, so on page 47, there's going to be a minimum land area per dwelling unit. And it's, on this example, it's 5,000 square feet. So, that's if somebody was creating, say, a single-family house. Or, but now if you're going to do a subdivision, so that would be on the next page, on 48. So, basically, any multifamily, because they would have to most likely comply with the village open space subdivision, space standards. So, then, you know, it's a different unit per acre calculation. However, so for instance, here you have net residential density per dwelling unit, so duplex and multifamily, you have a one per 3,630. It is less than that original, you know, the non-subdivision standard. However, you have to think about that it's net residential density, which means that we subtracted all that unbuildable land from it. When we calculate the, when a project comes in and it's one of these open space subdivisions or village open space subdivision, you, they bring in a lot and they calculate the net residential density, which is under definitions. And for that, they have to subtract what is considered unbuildable land, which is the primary conservation land, from the total area. And then whatever is left, you know, together with the wetlands, the wintering areas, streams and there's et cetera, and I'm not going to memorize all of them. And then they end up with a different acreage than the original one. You could have a lot that doesn't have any wetlands or anything much to subtract, you know, so those lots would be, you know, would potentially have less units under this formula.
Can we, can we use a real example?
Yeah, so, if you, if you had, if you had like 10 acres of, if you had 10-acre lot, okay?
Yeah, that's what I want to do.
And then you had two and a half, two and a half acres of that subdivision, you have seven and a half acres in which to make your calculation, so if you got 36, 130-
I get it. I, I heard that part, but now I'm on the next part, which is, so, so in one case you have 400, whatever it is, 400,000 square feet or-
Whichever it is under the-
And then you want to, it, I'm trying to figure out, so one, work with one acre. So, one, one acre got, it says here, minimum land area per dwelling unit is 5,000 square feet. So, that means the maximum density you could put on there is eight to the acre.
Yeah, we divide that.
Yeah, and then in the next calculation, you don't have an acre anymore, you only have three-quarters of an acre.
Well, it depends on if you have the wetlands-
Yeah, but let's just say a quarter of it-
I want me to rewind you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, to clarify, it's not just in certain types of subdivision. When you come in for a subdivision, you always calculate your net residential acreage. So, let's just say you have 100 acres, making up numbers, these are not real zones, it's just easy math. You have 100 acres, we say you need to deduct these six things, let's just say it totals 20 acres. So, you have 80 acres left. Let's just pretend the land per dwelling unit is a unit per acre. You can get 80 units. If you come in now, outside of subdivision, you don't do that net residential acreage calculation. So, in subdivision, you had 80 net acres of net residential acreage. At one unit per acre, you could get 80. Outside, you're not going to have to make that deduction, so you're not going to lose that 20 acres. So, in some cases, because you're not doing that calculation where we make you deduct wetlands with certain soils and steep slopes and other things, you could be increasing your starting buildable acreage.
You could put 100, even though you can only work on 80 acres, you can now get 100 units and put them on the 80 acres.
We're not going to tell you you can't work on the 80 acres, but we both know that because they're going to have DEP permitting and nobody's going to want to put their building on a 20% slope, that there are going to be determining factors. I've seen it, I've only seen one case ever where there's been a subdivision in the village area that had zero deductions. So, in a case of like a parking lot, where you have no deductions, we're really not making a difference. The only difference in some of the more urban parts of Freeport is in subdivision, we want to encourage multifamily. So, if you're in subdivision, even though you're doing the net residential density, the density could be a little bit lower. It's a wash, there's too many variables, we can't really get hung up on it. You should just know that at a general level, taking something out of subdivision removes that process and step of calculating the net residential acreage, which in some cases is a reduction in buildable land, thereby you could decrease in density. There are cases where it could be reversed, just, you don't really need to get hung in the weeds. So, for example, in Village Mix Use, just out, or sorry, Village Commercial 3, just outside of downtown, there's actually let you, a lower land per density for multifamily. So, if you had a lot where you were, had no deductions, you could get more going through subdivision than outside. Have I seen a lot of developments in that zone? One. So, I really don't think it's a big issue to get hung up on, I think it's just, you do need to be aware of it, that, that is a big difference when you take something out of subdivision, the way they calculate the buildable land. And there's a level of unknown because we don't have land analysis on every land in Freeport. And again, we're only talking about places where it's multifamily. We had one six minute until-
I wish we could rewrite this whole thing from start to finish.
We can after we're done the comp plan.
Yeah.
And I would encourage you to look at all of those-
I'm trying to figure out why it would be any different. Why, why, I mean, I get that that's the way it's written right now, but-
You mean that density? It, it's because it's the way it's written right now, we're working within the existing framework. I think one thing we need to look at when we're done, the comp plan, is our subdivision standards and the densities related to them.
Why wouldn't it be the same?
Because it's too, it's basically, it's open space, all of them, pretty much. So, it's basically, we're trying to get a developer, you know, instead of creating this, cutting a rectangle into a bunch of tiny rectangles, you're trying to like, you know, encourage them to set some land aside for open space or to preserve certain open space. So, by doing that, you're saying you're going to set some land aside and we're going to allow you to have smaller lots. You're going to basically, I think the intent is to keep the same density, but allow the development to be made in a way that actually protects the environment. And that's kind of the gist behind, you know, conservation subdivision or open space subdivision.
I want to get them out of the rabbit hole of the conservation and open space subdivisions because you need to keep in mind that already in districts like C1, C3, you know, Route 1 South, the Village, they're just subdivisions, they're not conservation subdivisions. They're, we're not talking about cluster developments. The only difference is the net residential acreage calculation. When you get in the pockets right around the Village Commercial one, you can get into some of these technical details of calculating density and calculating open space and clustering your lots together. That is the rare occasion. So, generally speaking, the big difference, just to be aware of, is that by doing this shift, we're eliminating that step of the land analysis, which could impact the overall buildable acres on the lot.
It will actually raise density.
It could raise it and in some cases, it could decrease it.
How many lots are left in the V1 this would, this would apply to?
Um, so, I can't, do they have, yeah, you have Village Open Space Subdivisions. I, I don't know the number of buildable lots in V1 that could trigger subdivision. Again, we're only talking about cases where they're doing a multifamily development. And a lot of the lots in the V1, I would assume, would have less environmental constraints and deductions to start with anyways.
I'm still confused.
If you had a lot that had a lot, you have a 100-acre lot and you could put 100 units on it, but under this thing, you could only put 80 units on it because you deducted 20. And what I'm trying to figure out is, why would we care if they're not going to build on 20 acres, assuming the height and size standards were met? Why would we care if they jammed 100 on the remaining 80? Why would we need them to have all, access to all? If, if they didn't have a wetland, then they could build 100, but they do have a wetland, so now they can't build 100?
So, like, in subdivision, part of it is you do that net residential acreage and this land analysis to protect those areas, so you don't build in them and you have setbacks from them. Site plan review doesn't get into it to that extent, but like I said, no developer's going to want to pay the fees and the permitting and the mitigation for plunking it in a wetland, putting it on a slope, like, going too close to the stream. So, I think there are, even though we're not going to make them deducted, there's natural features that they're going to avoid. Like Cecilia was saying, the point of subdivision, whether it's just subdivision or open space, is added steps to protect the environmentally sensitive areas of Freeport.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't have that effect.
Why? Why not?
Because if they can't build on there, they can't build on there. The issue is, what do they build on the rest of the land? So, why would it matter?
It does matter, I mean, it reduces the amount of that you could build on.
It's saying, you have a, you have this parcel-
Yeah.
And you could build all over it and you could build 100 units. Now, you can't build on that.
Protect the block.
So, the, right, and no matter what, whatever this rule says, you can't build on that because it's unbuildable. So, now the question is, can you build 100 on here? Before, you would have had to use all of it to build 100 if you didn't have that problem. You could, if you didn't have, if, if there was no open space, I mean, unbuildable land, you could spread your 100 out all over there. Now, because you can't build there, you will, you will pack it in denser over here. What do we care?
And you, and you could probably only get less, less units.
Right.
Because we, in subdivision, we're making you deduct that in a different way. But I think you're right, the end result in a lot of these cases is they're not going to build in it anyways, but it just impacts the density.
This wouldn't prevent them from building in it.
We're talking about just impact, mostly impacting the density is the point.
It's only impacting the density on the non, on the, on the buildable area.
On the whole lot. We look at the entire lot when we calculate-
Right, but they're not going to build on the non-buildable area, so they're going to build denser on the buildable area, which seems a little bit like the conversation about Maine Beer. If you have that behind, can you count that in your, in your acreage, in your density calculations? Why not?
So, in subdivision, they can't, outside of subdivision, they can.
I think with the open space or, which is often also called, the other terminology is cluster development. You know, one of the biggest differences, the effect of it is on the design, right? Because now, they had to protect a continuous piece of land, instead of that unbuildable land just becoming somebody, part of somebody's backyard, right? Now, it's a protected open space and it's officially protected. And that's kind of a, a different type of, you know, effect on the landscape than it would otherwise if they were just plopping a bunch of houses and individual lots.
So, I want to go back to- So I want to go back to Wayne. Other than causing a lot of confusion, was your original question answered or not really?
My question?
I thought you were the one that asked, or was it Mitch? Who asked the original question that Cecilia was starting, trying to clarify?
I sort of lost it. I don't think it was me.
I, I've lost track of the question at this point.
Yeah.
How about we move on?
We've gone right around the circle here.
We need the list of questions. I thought we were responding to somebody's question.
I think we were talking about the road and then it went into...
Yeah, my question was, why couldn't we have a private road? But then we've...
We answered that. We tried to answer that for you.
We've morphed, I didn't agree with you, but that's all right. We're done with that. Now we've morphed on something else.
But I answered it. You shouldn't agree.
I only raised some, some language issues and some statutory reference issues.
Okay. Okay, I'm not sure how we got on the standard then.
All right. Well, we were talking about the density and the impact.
She was saying that we were going to drop off this. One of the things that happen when you don't put it through subdivision is this discount won't happen. It strikes me that's a good thing, so all right.
Well, we're gambling a little bit. We don't know.
It could be good or bad and it just really depend on the district. For instance, VC1 has zero, you know, units per, I mean, you don't need acreage to put units. You just have to meet your, you know, the building capacity, space standards. So that wouldn't affect much. But say you had a big parking lot somewhere else and there's no, you know, deer wintering areas and wetlands to deduct, you know, that could potentially be less units that they would be able to fit on that same lot. But most likely, you might have things like wetlands. So it's just kind of hard to tell overall if it's going to be a net positive or net negative because it will really depend on the site itself.
Does that, does that go to only the V1 or is this going for every zone in town?
This goes to all zone that allows multifamily, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why I couldn't figure out why we were just on the V1 and deer wintering yards in the V1. I sort of lost track of why.
Yeah, so I am...
You are correct. There's no deer wintering in the V1.
I was going to say, I just couldn't figure out why that got brought up in the V1.
There are, there is a pocket of wetlands in VC1 though, in case you didn't know.
We don't have like a little guide or manual to our different types of open space and subdivision, but I highly recommend getting more familiar with the, under section 104, definitions of the zoning ordinance. You know, take a look at how we define net residential acreage and the different types of subdivisions to get a better understanding of what they are. Because it is confusing how it's, yes, it's sometimes hard to wrap your head around.
This also only applies to a single building, correct?
Yes.
What, yeah, what the language before you is talking about, a multifamily in a single structure.
In a single building. So this entire conversation is moot.
On a single lot, when they are not creating a new road for frontage purposes. I think, yes, I think you can move on.
Yes. Okay. So another thing, another impact of these changes, this one we're hoping to accomplish is to help streamline a little bit the permitting process and reduce that number of meetings. However, you know, in most cases, I mean, in some cases, they might still have to come for a conceptual plan under site plan so that a development might still have to come to two meetings. But it takes out the three meetings if it's a major subdivision. If it's minor, sometimes it can be done in two. But this is sort of like an incremental step to making the process a little bit easier for these types of multifamily development. Another impact to point with the changes is that transition of the project review board to digital. They're not going to receive paper copies. And, and I just want to flag, once again, that there is this change that we're doing resultant of your feedback that applies to any new site plan, which is requiring that proof of financial and technical capacity. And then further on, in section 602, we are requiring that public hearing for multifamily. That is something that you might want, you can, you know, also, again, incremental step to streamlining these types of development review. A lot of towns don't require that, so you could think about that in the future, but we are keeping that there for now. And then...
Could you take me to the page? Where is it?
That will be, I think, on page 107 of the zoning ordinance. I want to go through site plan.
107 of the subdivision ordinance.
No, the zoning, because it's under site plan. Things that we added to site plan to, to implement the recommendations that you had.
What page?
107.
107 is a blank page. I mean, 107, I mean, it's not blank. It just doesn't have changes on it.
It doesn't have a change.
I'm trying to understand.
Oh.
108, that's...
How about 108?
How about 108?
Except for applications involving a new fam, multifamily dwelling.
No, we're talking about a meeting.
That's to require a public hearing. So if somebody's coming in for a multifamily, usually in site plan, we don't require always a public hearing. They can have them. But now we are mandating that if you're coming in for a multifamily dwelling, we are going to require, which can include affordable housing development, and we are going to require.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So that's part of the, incorporating the feedback that we heard from the boards. And there's also something that is, I think, pretty important for me to point out that we will consider in the next revision of this. And it's section 412, the commercial district four.
Again, help us with the page.
Yes, I'm sorry. I think I like my, I printed mine, which is probably one page off, but I think it's 50.
Actually, for the specific reference, you're going to want to page, page 52, 53.
So on this commercial four, we don't have density standards for duplex and multifamily that is outside of the commercial open space subdivision. So when we're allowing somebody to build multifamily and outside of subdivision, we are going to need to have a standard because by making this change, we are creating a problem, which is there is no standard for multifamily outside of subdivision. And I think the background of that is that C4 didn't used to allow multifamily and then the applicant came in for zoning change to allow multifamily, but then they just put it into the commercial open space subdivision.
Can we look at the language? I'm not finding it.
Yes, there's no language proposed right now, but we are...
Oh, you're saying this is coming later?
Yes, yes, it's coming later. So we are thinking that we would just default to the, you know, carry over the density standards for multifamily and subdivision to that. And if that's okay, if you think that that is appropriate.
So this is just flagged for consideration. It came up when staff was making the changes. And just to clarify, we're only talking about a land per dwelling unit requirement. Like Cecilia said, the commercial open space subdivision language was new to Freeport when Divine Capital came in. That triggered subdivision, the standards with the land per dwelling unit, how much per unit were put into the subdivision standards because that's what they would have triggered. They also added that they trigger site plan. So now they're taking them out of subdivision. You have zero density requirement in an area that's not a growth area outside of subdivision. So the proposal is, right now, the net residential acreage per dwelling unit is 15 units per acre. So the staff suggestion is just to make that apply outside of subdivision for multifamily. That's just going through site plan, looking for input from the board. So the same land per dwelling unit requirement will apply for site plan, which would apply to single multifamily and subdivision.
So don't we, so that we don't create this conflict of, there's no standards now because, as we always considered multifamily as a subdivision, so therefore you're going to default to subdivision standards. Now that we're taking it out, we're leaving a blank and we feel like we need to address that because we don't want to.
15, where did that 15 to the acre come from?
On page 53, under D1, the net residential density per dwelling unit right now is one unit per 2,904 square feet, which comes out to 15 units.
That is the densest that you can build in Freeport. Is that what you're saying?
No, just in this zone.
Just in that zone.
Oh, just in this zone, I see.
This is commercial four. That's, it's like a very small area over near that.
Okay.
Fucking residences are located.
But it is one of the most densest of Freeport after VC1, too. But yeah, so, so we would be moving that, or not moving, but we would be having a similar standard added to the space standards for lots, which are not within subdivision to that section, C. If the board think that that is an appropriate approach.
And if you don't have thoughts, that, that's just what we'll bring forward to you in the final version for a public hearing.
Well, I understand you're trying to make it, you're trying to avoid this conflict.
Yes, we're trying to avoid this conflict that we're creating. By making these amendments, we are incidentally creating a conflict, which is something we don't like. Yes. So another thing too, and is that there will be maybe some additional cleanup too, that as you're going through it, you pick up on to section 602. So we noticed that staff review board, town engineer is part of that and we would be changing that to strike it out. And also forgot that we wanted to move the fill permits, which is on section 602 site plan because it shouldn't be there. So there's just some additional cleanup. So that could be what you see on the next iteration of all these proposed changes or any other additional change we might have picked up. So for instance, Wayne, I think you noticed that there's a wrong state statute that was mentioned. But before we move on to that, I just wanted to get a feel for, if you've come to any suggestion on that C4, if you agree with the staff that we should carry over the, the space standards for...
Yeah, I'm finding it. Go.
Noted. And then, yes, please, Wayne, if the wrong state statute is on page six of the subdivision proposed amendments, that's, I noticed that this afternoon.
Oh, okay, so you got it.
Is that the one?
Yeah, that's the one.
Article two.
I think you meant 4401 or 4402.
Yeah, 4402. Thank you, Wayne. Good eye.
Sure. And I have like a number of language changes, but we could do it offline if you want.
Oh, no, if you have other ones, please bring them up.
So that was on page six.
Let me just get all my...
So the next, there's only about six of these. So on page 13.
Is this of the subdivision?
Subdivision, yep.
Oh, you're on the subdivision.
I wasn't sure what was meant. This could just be me. The word exit on the third sentence in red.
Under...
Portion of, under site distance.
Site distance.
I don't know what you meant by the exit. Exit of what?
With the front of it.
Is that where the driveway comes out for the road?
I don't know.
This might be...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Wayne? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, on, under site distance on page 13.
Are we, you're in subdivision, yes?
Subdivision, yep. The third sentence, standing on that portion of the exit. This wasn't clear to me what that meant.
So like when you're measuring site distance, you, basically you come up to where you would exit, that driveway and measure from the height of the driver there? Kind of a standard practice way of measuring site distance.
Okay, so you don't want to say exit of what?
Yeah, we can flag it and look at making an adjustment. I, this has been worked together over time. I'm not sure of the origin. So let me, let us flag it and we will look at it and bring it cleaned up.
Okay.
Do that.
Yep.
The portion of the exit is the term you find confusing, correct?
I'm sorry?
The wording you, you flag is portion of the exit, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, noted.
Anything else?
Yeah. Page 19, the paragraph, second before the end, second to last paragraph, where the board shall take final action on the completion of the review of the combined state inventory. I would just change that to take action and delete all the other words up until combined site inventory map.
Okay, to read a full review spending.
Can you repeat, can you repeat where you're getting at there? Because we have that big long title, which is referring to a specific plan.
Yeah, well, where the, where the red line starts in the paragraphs, the sentence starting, "board shall take final action," final is crossed out. So the board shall take action on, and you have the completion of the review of the combined site inventory and...
Site analysis and conceptual sketch plan.
Sorry, I don't know that.
Yeah, that does read...
I was just trying to clarify.
Page 19, second to last.
Is it the top?
The completion of the review of the combined. Okay, so what is it that you want to say?
I just thought, I just thought the language was unclear. If you want to just flag it and, you know, consider rewriting it or not, that's fine with me.
I think part of that is that we have such, in my opinion, a clunky term for that specific plan.
Mm-hmm.
Like the actual reference to the plan is that full site inventory, site analysis and conceptual sketch plan. Like that is the name of a plan and it does read confusing, but we'll flag it to revisit.
Right. It was a few words before that that I thought could be deleted and a little clearer. The next one is on page 21. Just trying to find which one it was. Oh, six, under 6.1. I think with your deletions, the sentence becomes an incomplete sentence.
Period. Oh.
Yeah.
You see what I mean?
The "when" should be capitalized.
Oh, "when." It's just capitalizing the W, "when" the project, as I said, the...
Yeah, that needs a wording adjustment. It's missing something.
It's still not an incomplete sentence.
Yep.
Okay, so you guys can work on that. 22, just a typo. You have, somewhere on this page, you have "us" when you meant "is." I'm just trying to find it.
It's an F.
F.
Towards the bottom.
Health, safety and well, health, safety and general welfare is protected and preserved.
Right.
Not us protected and preserved.
And it's in F, three lines up from the bottom.
Oh, yes, I found it. It's, I guess it should be...
And just two more on page 43. Should be with chapter seven, add the words of the Freeport street numbering ordinance.
I think it's referring, cha, chapter seven is the chapter of the municipal code, so it's chapter seven. Maybe like a hyphen Freeport street numbering ordinance.
Hyphen would do it then, yep. And the last one's very minor, just, page 74. Crossed out the wrong figure on MRS.
We've been trying to move to keep them consistent.
Oh, no, that's, no, you're right about that.
Oh, yes. No, I see the one on top. Yes, you, you, yes, yes, I see it.
On top, yeah.
On 13.2.
It's the one on top, right, right.
Good eye.
There you go. That's it.
That was great.
It's wrong. Aren't they the same?
No, it should be MRS or sometimes it's MRSA. We've been trying to just, you know, we picked one.
Well, you have an MR.
Trying to keep it consistent.
Oh, it's...
Yeah, the S should be there on that.
I got it. I got to there.
It was a good eye.
Yeah.
There was just so many amendments that I might still be finding some.
It was amazingly good considering how, how many changes you made.
Yes, could you please?
Hi, Chandler. It's Hardenberg, 11 Somerset. I first of all want to congratulate Wayne for picking up these errors. I want to beg you, and I think Sophie... I want to beg you, and I think Sophie is on my side here. If you're going to rewrite this, let's have every single sub clause labeled with the article, the chapter of the article, so I can tell where I am on any page. When I open up these pages, I can't tell where I am in, in the whole ordinance.
Do you mean like, so for instance, article two, do like article two.
Page thirty-one, it's great that we have C, D, E, and F, but I have no idea what, where I am.
Yeah, you have to go back.
Right.
Yeah, you like the style where you would be, you know.
Not just a footer, no, every sub clause should have every notation.
Eight point three C, eight point three E, that's what he suggested.
Right, all that, yeah. And it's not just you guys, it's the entire.
I, I see what you mean.
And this is, you see.
The only issue with that is that if we're referring to it on another ordinance, like there was just, we would have to, well, I guess it would still be it.
Just that this is your chance, if you're redoing this, start with this. Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I get lost, too, in the, in the finding out where you are. It's a different style. What does the planning board think about that?
I would, either a footer or something that would tell you which section you're in would be really helpful, yeah, sure, completely, completely agree with that.
I don't know what a lift I'm getting myself into, but I'm going to get it started.
I mean, it's not the end of the world, but it would be helpful.
Okay. I'm saying yes now, and then I'll, I'll think about it tomorrow when I'm suffering through the changes. Yes, so, yeah. So that, any more comments on all of these changes? Any last minute suggestions before we, November, we're hoping to bring it to, clean it up and then bring it to a public hearing?
Great. Do you guys have a phone on Zoom, I can't tell if.
No, there's no hands up, we have just one attendee. Anyone else wish to speak? If you're on Zoom, you could just raise your hand. So, did we lose Sam?
I think we've lost Sam.
He sent a text to step away for a bit.
Okay, so.
Oh, so then now I'm in charge.
Yep.
So we're going to move on to the last, no, second to the last item on the agenda, and that's Brett, tell them about his work.
Hey, everybody, it's been a busy night. I know you've been dealing with a lot of stuff in the weeds, so we'll be real careful. There's a lot going on with this board. We have some stress, some staff changes. Caroline stepping up into the Assistant Town Manager, we have Kyle on board, pretty excited about it. But we also want to be really efficient with your time, with the comprehensive plan going on, with the big design review overhaul happening, and with the Dogbone Work Group soon to kick out some recommendations. The staff believes that pretty soon, as those projects transition from sort of planning into implementation, there'll be a lot more of these zoning updates coming your way. But we do feel that we have a little bit of a window of time here to take on some other important projects and move the needle while these bigger initiatives are underway. And so with that in mind, we wanted to spend just a couple of minutes and let you know across that table that I see Andy's pulled out, which has been a catalog of potential projects, updates, needed cleanups that have been identified over the years by various committees, staffs, boards. Among that menu of options, what we tried to identify was, were a few sort of bite-sized projects that we could carry out in the near term where some of these bigger initiatives start to land on your plate. And so where we landed really was a couple of key cleanups that will bring the town into compliance with new state mandates and legislation. And then one sort of bigger, important project that we feel we're well positioned to move forward with Kyle on the board. So the first one is to update the shoreline zone policies and procedures. There's a couple of things that have been flagged by the Code Enforcement Officer, general consistencies, and then there's a D E P order. That's pretty simple, has to do with change of the definition of height. But these are things that are mandated by the state that the town needs to address, and so that should be a priority, we feel. The second sort of important compliance with state mandates is to update the mobile home and manufactured home standards. There's some legislation passed that makes it a requirement that towns treat mobile manufactured homes just like any single family home. And that means doing some updates to our zoning as well. So that's important to come into compliance with the state. So those are the two. And then the third one is a little more ambitious and arguably more impactful, and that is the site plan review. It's come up a couple of times tonight, you know, there's opportunities perhaps to look at that section six oh two and think about how that process could be made a little bit more efficient. That's the site plan.
Is that the light green on the right, is that what?
On the downtown vision plan?
Yeah, that, that fits.
Are you looking on here?
Yeah, the, the.
This one?
The ones highlighted in green are the ones that the staff has identified, and they're the ones that are basically baked into this memo.
Right, but now you're talking with the one on the far right.
I can't, I don't have it in front of me.
Streamline the permitting process to make the development process quicker and more.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, that's.
Just a different color.
Yep, exactly. That's six oh two.
That's six oh two.
Six oh two.
And Kyle has experience in other towns doing things a little bit differently than we do here. And the idea here is, in some cases, you know, conceptual plan, and then you come back for the, for the final approval. Some projects could be simpler, and maybe if we can get it in front load, some more staff time, make that front end staff pre-application process a little more robust, give the board confidence that the project's been fully vetted, and then bring it forward. Not in all cases, that's, that's a question to navigate, it's a topic to explore. But the idea here that we're looking for the board to align with us on, if you do, is to give some direction to staff to go ahead and start to think about that, and start to work on what that might look like, and then bring that back to you relatively soon for some discussion. So we're basically looking at, this is where our priorities are that we think could help move the needle in the near term as these bigger policies, you know, start to land on our plate. And we're just looking to make sure that you guys are, are aligned with that. Need some heads nodding?
I'm excited about that one.
Me, too.
That'll help. What, what are these other ones that you didn't call out that were in?
Basically, there's.
P R B stuff.
Yeah, some of the filter, the filter that we looked through is basically, you know, are these other big initiatives that would take a long time and a lot of capacity, recognizing that, you know, there's going to be more applicant-driven things coming on, on the pipeline. You guys are going to start to deal with the design review hopefully relatively soon, and the Dogbone's coming your way, too. So we didn't want to have a work planned for the near term. That just jams up the works because there's so much to do. So we're trying to balance capacity with opportunity here and keep things moving, but also recognize that, you know, we're here three hours tonight, and you guys are volunteers, and we want to make sure that we'll be talking about that, too.
I'm excited about your 2011 comp plan list. I mean, I realize that's for later, so I'm with you on the timing, but that, I was just thinking as you were doing this, well, what about all the work that's about to come our way?
Yeah.
And so here's a beginning to look at it.
Yep.
And we can start, I mean, that, I mean, that should inform our discussion about the visioning of the comp plan and what it does, that we agree that you've sort of presupposed the outcome, I guess.
I think there's some, some.
These all come from 2011.
Yeah, these are what didn't get done, so maybe they shouldn't be getting done, you know, or maybe they fell through the cracks, but. Yeah, that's ten years ago.
Oh, that's awesome, well, I want to study this.
Yeah.
Of course, it's really good.
Because you, we talked about this at the last meeting. Now, that was done, that column was populated from my memory. And I had Sam take a look at it because he has a lot of institutional knowledge. As we go through 2011 comp plan implementation, we might refine it more. But that's, generally speaking from memory, things that weren't done. And by done, we had a lot of things that were talked about, and the decision was made to do nothing. And so those have come off the list because we've already been through them. This is the remaining things I don't think.
These are not things that we decided to do, no, these were just never talked about.
I, to my knowledge, my quick knowledge, these have not been talked about.
Thirteen years.
Correct. We did a whole bunch of other things, but not these ones.
Wow. That's the list that has power.
There can be some further discussion going forward, but, you know, there's a lot to do, plenty of work to go around, we're trying to be thoughtful about it, trying to balance it out, trying to, you know, strike a balance between the cleanup items and also the big picture items that are going to move the community's vision forward. So if we're comfortable with the shoreline, the, in the mobile manufactured home standards to come into compliance with the state, we feel like six oh two is a good place to go put some energy as well. And just looking again for, you know, confirmation that you guys feel that's a good, a good strategy.
What's the thing here just under shoreline? Shoreline requirements to access by barge is problematic, what's that mean?
To tell you the truth, I don't know the ins and outs of all these. I think that's been identified probably by the project review board at some point, or maybe coastal waters.
Here comes Caroline.
Or by Nick. I don't want to have to talk, but Andy keeps making me talk. So that's actually a requirement in state shoreline zoning regulations that.
We don't have now?
We have it now, the P R B is like, we keep waving this, a lot of people are going by land, it's silly that they have to go for barge, do the grass and all this other stuff. We can't change it right now, but if we could, they want to, and so they wanted to put it on there in case we get the opportunity.
I don't understand what the deal is, though.
So it has a criteria in shoreline zoning, like for the shoreline stabilization applications.
So if you got to fix your bankhead.
You, yes, but the preference, unless you prove otherwise, is that the applicant accesses the site via barge rather than over land.
I see.
We're seeing a lot of people come in over land because we're seeing like projects in a row, and there's already a place for them to come over, and it doesn't need tree removal, but it's something that keeps coming up, so they just flagged it. There's really nothing we can do about it right now, but as Kyle has conversations with D E P about different standards, that's one they'd like to flag to see if there's any flexibility. I don't think we'll like.
So they can come in and fix their bankhead, or stabilize or whatever.
Yeah, either way, I don't, I don't think we're going to make progress, but we can always ask.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you.
Right.
You ever march your orders?
I'm just amazed at the, the stuff that's in that 2011 list. I mean, it'd be interesting if people looked at that list and starred their one or two favorites, because I don't understand why. I mean, I know now we're in the middle of a comp plan, but that's going to be another year before that's done, and it's like some of this stuff is so straightforward.
Because it's fun to write comp plans.
Consider this, consider this, consider this, do nothing.
Right.
We all would do more, I think.
Yep.
Fit faster, and I realize there's staff time, that you can only go so fast here, but.
Yep, we'll, we'll keep plowing through, and hopefully we can get these done soon and move on to the next, that's the idea. And then one, to that point, one other thing, too, that's in the memo. We feel it's a good move at this point. You've noticed tonight, you know, with this subdivision exemption, that that integrates work from the P R B and the P B. So we feel like it's a good move staff-wise to make the town planner, Kyle, staff both boards, just to make that connectivity and make sure that that communication is streamlined and integrated. So you'll see in November, Cecilia's going to transition into taking on some of these projects and bringing them forward, but the board will be staffed by Kyle going forward. So I think it's going to be a good solution for everybody, and give everybody a chance to grow and, and work together in a new way.
Cool.
Thank you all.
Well, item seven is, really only applies to Chalmers. So unless you have anything to say, person's wishing to address the board on non-agenda items, and since there's only staff and you in the room, unless you.
I did, I did.
You have said your piece.
We've already done this item.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, I guess, who are out.
All right, thank you, Bonnie, for hanging in there via Zoom.
Thank you. Good night.
You, too.